Ladies and the pledge, everybody please stand, put your hand over your heart.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll observe a moment of silence.
Hascheff, Guston, Zadra, Sforza, Dorch, Azzie, Kachell.
Here. At this time we'll go to the public comment. Mr. Burl Love.
Everyone, I'm Mr. Mayor, I'll be quick. I'm here today because the Reno Gazette Journal-
Burl, would you come over and identify yourself for the record on the news?
I didn't know this was going to be on the record.
Yes, sir, I know that.
Hello, everybody. Burl Love, editor of the Reno Gazette Journal. The Reno Gazette Journal annually picks a Citizen of the Year, and I regret to say it wasn't you, Mr. Mayor, this year, maybe next year perhaps. But rather than a citizen, the newspaper honored the first responders because of the amazing year that 2011 was, which has rolled into this year as well. And in honor of the first responders, we wanted to make a presentation today. Chief Hernandez helped me round up signatures of all the first responders that were featured on the front page of the newspaper, and also was turned into a poster, the proceeds of which are going to benefit the American Red Cross. So, in honor of the first responders, two of which fall under the jurisdiction of the city, we'd like to, on behalf of the newspaper, present you, Mr. Mayor, with a framed poster honoring the first responders, and hopefully that honor that we are giving you today extends to the first responders.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we really appreciate that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council members.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Robert Bennett. I'm a property owner in Reno. I've been living in Reno for 14 years now, and like many people in Reno and across America, I'm doing a little better than some. I'm only treading water with my home after 12 years of making mortgage payments, it's now worth what I owe on it. And I'm not a corporation. I'm a human being, and you all represent me and the fellow humans here in Reno. Aggrandizing, bickering, blaming, scapegoating, and butt kissing seems to have been the principal activities of Congress during the past decade or so. Justice does not exist between the left nor the right, and the nation has largely been visionless since the first Bush administration. Left and right view each other as moving the nation in undesirable directions. The people, we the people, are caught in the middle, but we're beginning to take back the power, which gradually was transferred from us to both the bureaucracies and the corporations. Again, corporations are not people, they're legal fictions designed solely for the purpose of limiting the financial liabilities of investors. We don't need corporations dictating to us. They already dictate and demand way too much, and need to have their influence diminished. I'm not suggesting bigger bureaucracies, they're also too big, powerful, and don't respect the individual too often. The status quo is not serving the people, and the status quo has been the underlying reason for the financial quandary many of us find us in. With luck, Occupy Reno will continue to point to a more harmonious future for our citizens, all people. In the meantime, I say shop locally, bank locally, and continue to make Reno and Northern Nevada a better place to live, work, recreate, and visit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sam Diney.
Sam Diney, the Encyclopedia of Reno government and the most trusted name in Nevada government, along with Mayor Kachell. You know, folks always ask me what I'm going to talk about at the podium, and I have to tell them I like to come to the podium to find out what I'm going to say, and I'm following that gentleman who was here two times before, who doesn't look anything like the picture I've seen in the newspaper. Anyway, I have to say this right now, for the first time possibly ever, I have seen the Reno Gazette Journal regurgitator newspaper do something that I approve of. But on the other hand, I'm not really approving of what they did because they didn't do anything except take a picture and present a whole bunch of hullabaloo presenting it to the mayor in the city of Reno. The Reno Gazette regurgitator newspaper is arguably the worst thing that we have in our community. The Reno Gazette regurgitator ought to be banned from business for at least one year so they can go somewhere and learn how to print the truth, write the truth, and print the truth. And what I'm leading into is the fact that if the Reno Gazette regurgitator and the rest of the media fools would have only been listening to Sam all of these years, we would not be in this pickle we're in. Occupy Reno wouldn't even have a justification for being in Reno. Sam has been at these podiums for 18 years, 18 years, telling you, advising you, begging you, prompting you to do the right thing or not do the wrong thing, which many times you do. I chastise these folks on the dais over and over again, but then I have to remind myself, Sam, it's not them. If the media was doing its job in printing Sam's truth instead of being so insanely afraid and jealous of Sam, 160-pound senior citizen, used to fly B-52 bombers and F-4 Phantoms, but ever since then, Sam's been a Mr. Nice Guys, everybody knows, just trying to make Reno, trying to save Reno from its government. And the Reno Gazette regurgitator newspaper, just, they'd rather write a story about a cat caught in a tree than write the story about Sam ordering you not to buy this lavish building for $25 million. What could we do with $25 million? We could do a lot of stuff that, we could even give some of the money to the Occupy Reno guys out there, and maybe they'd go somewhere else and occupy, maybe the mayor's house. Don't I give you that idea, they don't want to occupy the mayor's house. Not that it's not a nice house. As I close out, putting my nice guy hat back on, the Reno Gazette regurgitator gave you that nice picture up there, that's good. I'm taking it a step further, and I'm dedicating, I'm taking my two-watt Yankees band singing sensation that's sweeping the nation, we're legends in our own mind band, and I'm presenting the Reno Police Department and the Sheriff's deputies with their own personal dedicated album, music album, over an hour of music on here, unique music, and I'm also dedicating the same type of album right there for the fire department, and the real, I don't bandy that word about a lot, but the word hero belongs to those people right there and all the other people who are down there saving our city.
Thank you, sir. Chief Hernandez.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. I'd like to provide a brief update of the fire that occurred last Thursday, the Washoe Fire, if you'll indulge me. During the early morning hours of Thursday, January the 19th, a brush fire started near the Viola Street and Highway 395 area in Old Washoe City. The fire quickly grew into a major response effort that lasted through Sunday, January the 22nd. Crews were dispatched at 12:43, the first-doin' engine was Engine 16, arrived at 12:48. Immediately upon arrival, crews recognized the magnitude of the event and upgraded the call to multiple alarms. The area of fire origin was a small vacant field surrounded by homes. Wind conditions caused the fire to spread quickly and in multiple directions. Within the first hour, mutual aid requests were made, and units were dispatched by our neighboring jurisdictions, specifically Sparks, Carson City, and of course, the Lyon, North Lyon County. By late Thursday evening, the forward progress of the fire had been stopped at the Andrew Lane, Andrew Lane Street, which is on the east side of 395, and at the rear of Galena High School on the west side of 395. Weather conditions improved Thursday evening to include a light shower, increased humidity, and decreased wind speeds, which significantly aided the fire effort. By Friday evening, fire containment was at 65 percent. Crews had initiated overhaul operations, and by Saturday afternoon, the fire was 100 percent contained. There was a fatality, however, we are awaiting the outcome of the medical examiner to determine the exact cause of death. Approximately 29 residential structures were destroyed, and multiple homes suffered some form of damage to their property. A total of 3,177 acres were burned. We did have some injuries to first responders, however, they were primarily minor, and they were specifically wind-blown, dust debris-type injuries to eyes. During the course of the investigation, a male presented himself to investigators and admitted that he had accidentally caused the fire when he improperly discarded ashes from a wood-burning stove. We did have crews, even through the rain event that we had during the weekend, we did have crews through Sunday evening to ensure that any spot fires that would occur were completely extinguished, and they were. Early into the incident, we requested an FMAG, which is a fire management assistance grant, and we did receive that, which will cover 75 percent of the response costs. There were some challenges early on. We did have a vice presidential visit. Just prior to the initiation of this fire, we had a major 18-wheeler accident in North 395 over in the Cold Springs area. We also had an 18-wheeler that had flipped over due to high winds south 395 and west Washoe Valley, and we had multiple dust storms that were reported as fires throughout the city, one over by the Gun Club, one over by Arrow Creek, and one in the Cold Springs area that we did have engines responding to. So from the very onset, crews were challenged to respond to this. I'd like to take a moment to quickly recognize outside agencies that responded, specifically the Reno Fire Department Lead Agency, combined with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, Reno Police Department, Washoe County Sheriff's Department, Pleasant Valley Volunteer Fire Department, Silver Lake Volunteer Fire Department, Red Rock Volunteer Fire Department. Andy Flock did an outstanding job from Sparks in sending units, and Sparks Fire Department. The Nevada Air Guard sent a crash truck. The Nevada Division of Forestry, United States Forestry Service, Bureau of Land Management, Carson City Fire, Carson Sheriff's Department, North Lyon County, Central Lyon County, Story County, our friends from the Lake Tahoe area, Tahoe Douglas, North Lake Tahoe, Squaw Valley, Lake Valley, and North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District. We also had additional volunteers, Peavine, Galena, and Verdei Volunteer Fire Departments. From California, we received assistance from Nevada County Consolidated Fire Department, Pirdale, Chicago Park Fire Department, Ofer Hills Fire Department, Rough and Ready Fire Department, Higgins Fire Department, South Placer Fire Department, Loomis, Placer Hills and Forest Hills Fire Department. I was with the manager when this call came in, and I asked him if he wanted to join me or if he wanted to come back to City Hall, and he wisely accepted to come back to City Hall as we were there for almost three days.
Shows he's a smart young man.
I want to quickly show a picture. Mike Friend is with the Nevada Division of Forestry. Mike had just finished coming off of probably a 14-hour shift. Over the overnight hours, he had a cup of coffee and a bagel in his hand. I walked up to Mike and I said, "Mike, how you doing?" He said, "Good, chief. I think we got a good handle on it." And I said, "I got bad news for you, Mike, you're going to have to go back out on the line." And he actually smiled, and he said, "I'm ready to go, chief, I'm ready to go." And he exemplified all of the first responders that were there throughout that event, all of the volunteers, Reno Fire, every single one of them. As I was touring with the governor, the governor stopped and was visiting with some neighbors that had lost their home, and we had some fire crews there, and he walked up to one of the fire members, firefighter Chris Svensson, and he asked him, he said, "Look, you look a little tired." And he said, "Well, I've been on the line for 21 hours." And that just speaks to the integrity and to the folks that we have working the line, and people like Mike. So in closing, I just want to say that I'm proud of the response, I'm proud of our first responders, to include law enforcement, military, and everyone else that was there, including community members that stepped up and brought coffee, and business communities that made their hotels and casinos available for the people that were impacted. I call this Call and Fire Two, and it was very much like that event. So with that, it's a pleasure and an honor to serve this community.
Thank you.
Before I begin, I want to thank the-
Identify yourself for the record.
Okay, I am called Don Weber, and I don't need a title.
Thank you.
Before I start, I want to thank the City Council for the cordial relations that the city has had with the Occupy Reno group since they first started here. I know there's a problem now, but I'm, on the whole, you've been very cordial, and I want to thank the Reno Police Department also via the council for being cordial with the Occupy group. There is an incident that happened recently, though, that I want to bring to your attention. An Occupy member was arrested for a traffic citation that he had forgotten about. I'm not here to talk about that. But while he was being checked in at the police department, the officer that checked him in asked him if he was a member of a gang, and he said, "No." And then she went on and asked him about the Occupy movement, and she said something to the effect that she was going to put it down, as I understand, as a gang, because she wasn't sure whether or not it was a gang. So I would request that the council asks the police department to do a poll and find out how many officers think that the Occupy movement is a gang. And the reason I would like that done is when I spoke before the council the last time, I reminded the council, and maybe revealed to some of them for the first time, that when Alma Briscoe was chief of police, he had publicly stated that he was considering withholding police protection from hippies. There are some of us who are elder who remember that. It actually happened. Briscoe also, I didn't say this last time, Briscoe also exercised what is called selective enforcement against hippies. And then additionally, Briscoe, along with the media at the time, repeatedly called the hippies filthy. I'm sure everyone has heard that by now. But neither the police department, nor the city council, nor any council people, nor the media, has ever produced evidence, any evidence at all, that the general hippie population was filthy. That's a propaganda thing that's still hanging around. I really would like you to ensure that the Occupy people, as they continue to operate in the city, I would like you to ensure that there is going to continually be cordiality, and I would like it if the council and the police departments publicly stated that the Occupy group is not a gang. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Derek Gist.
My name is Derek Gist, and I moved to this town. I came here on vacation, and I got stuck here, and I'd like to thank you. I think this is one of the best towns I've been into, and I'd like to thank the police for not, you know, being biased against me. You know, they had a situation where I was up here with a, you know, European woman, and she called the police, told me, and she lied and all that stuff. She hit some dope or something, and she went crazy, and I had it on the tape, and they believed me. So I want to thank you, Mayor, and, you know, I'm from Compton, but I got programs up here to help my people with gangs, drugs, anger management, conflict resolution, and maybe we could do some economic development. If I can turn Compton around, I can turn this city around. This city right here just needs some ethical practices and get away from some immorals. You got gambling here, and you got prostitution legal, and with that, you need some things to offset that if you want to have some good kids. I'm a single parent, all my kids graduated from school, and none of them on drugs, and I got the best reputation in my town. And a good reputation is worth all the money in the world. I come here with this shirt on my back, and I'm going to turn it around, and I just need a little support, and I'll help your town. And I don't really see too much for African-Americans here, and I'd like to start some programs here after school or in the park to maybe, you know, get them off these drugs, or just let them know what education can do. I believe in education over incarceration. I believe incarceration is a waste of money. I believe in incarceration for some, but not so much. We can do a lot more about that money. Instead of creating criminals, let's try to create college students, business managements, and mayors like you, and people like you, and I like this. And one day I come in here, I'd like to see an African-American sitting up there, maybe myself. I'm in this town, in this town, I'm known as Max, Maximilian, and when my people come to this town, they're just going to want to have fun, because we have fun in our state. In California, marijuana is legal. Marijuana ain't legal in here, which is another problem. Well, it's not no problem, I like that. It helps me get my mind straight. But other than that, I'd like to see a little bit more programs for African-Americans. I'll be meeting with a few people. I already got a meeting with the mayor's wife somewhere over here, somebody gave me a lead somewhere, wherever your wife work at, a good life, government life. I got a cap, children cabinet, so I'm on my way over there. I got a lead, and I got to start, and I want a chance in this town. And you give me a chance in this town, I turn this town around, for my people. I can't speak for everybody else, because we all got our own culture, our own music, our own movies. We all got different things, but if we judge each other on the contents of our character, then we'll be able to get along, and that's my message, and I appreciate it. And I like your police.
Thank you very much, sir. Gladys Anderson.
I just came today to comment about Urban going in lounges. Do you know, my dad's a chief state trooper, and he's told me that's unlawful for Urban to go in lounges. Thank you.
Thank you. Having no other public comment cards, I'll close the public comment section, bring it back to the table. We'll go to approval of the agenda. Before we go for approval, pull items today are item E9. The staff is requesting this be pulled at this time, we'll hear it in February. Proclaimations today, District 46 Lions Club's International Eyeglass Collection. Presentations, item D1, Katie Simon, the county manager. Item D2, parking kiosk plan by Mr. Dut. Public hearings after 12:15. There are no public hearings tonight at 6:00. There will be a joint Reno City Council Redevelopment Agency Board meeting this afternoon. Item B1 is a pulled item at this point, on item B1, the city manager. Huh? No, no, that's on the joint meeting, I'm sorry. All right, any other changes? Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve of changes.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion passes. Cash dispersal, Mr. Hascheff. Mr. Guston, Mr. Dorch, okay, entertain a motion. Have a motion, have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Zadra, item C1.
I actually read about this in the paper over the weekend, and have about four pair of glasses to bring to you all, so I'm pleased to be able to give some recognition to your good work. Whereas the Lions Club International is a service organization with 1.3 million members and approximately 45,000 clubs in over 200 countries in geographical areas around the world, and whereas District 46 Lions Club supports many local, national, and global service initiatives, including the prevention of blindness and advocacy of the blind and visually impaired, and whereas Lions Club collects, clubs collect more than 5 million pairs of used eyeglasses for distribution in developing countries, and members of our community are encouraged to donate their unused eyeglasses to benefit the visually impaired. Now therefore, Robert A. Kachell and this city, Mayor of the city of Reno and this council do hereby proclaim February 2012 as Eyeglass Collection Month in and for the city of Reno, and we encourage all citizens to participate in Eyeglass Collection Month and recognize the District 46 Lions Club for their many contributions to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Suraj Zucci, I've been a Lion for 30 years. Thank Mr. Mayor, the council, in particular Councilman Hascheff for putting this together for us. And very quickly, I would like to mention, you know, for years when we collect eyeglasses, we pack them up, we clean them up, used to send them to the state next door, and then they were sent out. Now we are in the process of talking to a couple of prisons in Nevada, so it'll give the inmates something to do, and when they come out, hopefully come out with a skill. Just update. And I would like to thank the media and Gazette Journal for helping us not be the biggest little secret anymore. little secret anymore.
Well, thank y'all very much. Thank y'all very much. All right. At this time, I'm going to jump by a couple of things here real quick to take the consent agenda so we can get some staff out here. Do you have any items you want to pull for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, and that's E6.
E6?
Mm-hmm. Just a couple of questions on that.
Any others? Any others?
Move approval of the rest, Mr. Mayor?
Have a motion. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will go to presentations. Ms. Simon, the Washoe County Manager. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, Mr. Manager, Katie Simon, Washoe County Manager, for the record. And before I begin, I want to express my personal thanks and thanks on behalf of the Washoe County Commission for the tremendous dedication and professionalism of the City of Reno staff who worked the Washoe Fire. In particular, Chief Mike Hernandez and the entire City of Reno Fire Department team was outstanding. There were several folks who went above and beyond, and the dedication of the fire service was just tremendous. I want to thank Michelle Anderson, Lisa Mann, Paul Klein, Kyle West, Kate Thomas, Kevin Knutson, Chief Pitts, and the Reno Police Department, Public Works and Building Staff who helped with the damage assessment, and of course, council members who came out and showed their support for the tremendous professionalism of the public servants who were out there. So thank you. And the Board of County Commissioners did recognize Reno Fire and Fire Chief Hernandez and the entire team yesterday, so thank you for that. I also want to introduce some folks who are here today. As you may be aware, the Sheriff's Office has now taken over responsibility for Regional Animal Services, so I wanted to just introduce Barry Broad, who is the new Regional Animal Services Manager. We also have with us today Under Sheriff Todd Vinger and Assistant Sheriff Tim Kuzanik, who are here to answer any of your questions. I'm here to answer your questions, and will welcome all of your questions and feedback, and will pass along any information, concerns, and issues to the County Commission. Did not prepare a presentation for you. Thought it was more important for me to listen to you and to answer your questions, so this is your time.
All right. Ms. Zadra?
Thank you, Katie, for, or Manager Singla for being here. We've had, at the city level, me personally, I've received many inquiries, people who have concerns that the standards for some of the policies and procedures are potentially changing or perhaps need to change, depending on the thinking. One in particular being the number of days that a stray is held, that the five days is not nearly enough if someone is on vacation in particular, and they are gone for seven to 10 days. The dog would be, the animal would be destroyed with just the five-day carryover. And there seem to be some concerns with the relationship of the operations, just the attitudinal. There are people who are concerned with the changeover and don't know what's occurring and why the individual that was the director of the operations previously was, to use the words I've heard, forced out when he is nationally recognized, apparently is respected tremendously and asked to go and speak about best practices throughout, you know, our region and other areas of the United States. And the, there's concern about the inner working relationship between Animal Services and the Humane Society and how that is formulated and what improvements could potentially be brought to that relationship. Those really are kind of the top of the list. Then there's the overriding concern that I hear consistently from folks is the no-kill and the anticipation from the bond issue. There was an understanding by many people, while the word "no-kill" was never in that language, that that is indeed what they were voting for. So there's some unclarity and concern that's been expressed to me consistently on that issue as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to respond to those questions as we go?
Sure.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Zadra. The issue of extending the five-day hold on animals, clearly an issue, and we did actually bring an ordinance change forward to lengthen that period of time that before animals would be released to rescue agencies. There was a lot of controversy at the time about other changes in the ordinance, so that ordinance change will come back to the commission, and we will certainly carry forward your input that you would like to see that extended. I personally agree with you, and I think that it does need to be longer than five days. On the departure of former Animal Services Manager Mitch Snyder, without violating any of Mitch's confidence, Mitch had some back issues and did retire. He had back surgery and was out for quite some time and did retire. So we valued Mitch's service. Mitch was an outstanding representative of Animal Services. I actually had Mitch come train me with my dog that I, I didn't say train the dog. He had to come train me, the dog that I adopted from the Humane Society. So we have great confidence in Mitch and wish him well. Working on the relationship with the Nevada Humane Society, always an important feature of our partnership at the Regional Animal Services Center. We do have a professional services agreement with Nevada Humane Society, and I know that the Sheriff's Office potentially can comment on their going-forward relationship with Nevada Humane Society. Very important partners, and we value what they do for the community, extremely important part of our operation. The no-kill, want to address that. Washoe County Regional Animal Services has never been adopted as a no-kill policy. We are an animal-friendly facility, and as we provided to you the report, most recent report that was provided from NHS to American Humane, it's the Matties Fund Report, we have a 94% save rate for animals, which is one of the highest in the country. We do not save 100% of the animals. Some of them come to us with issues that prevent them from being adopted and being saved, but 94% is one of the best in the United States. Clearly, the opportunity to revisit that exists, and the board has had discussions about the no-kill policy, but a no-kill policy is a big challenge in a community. It's a very controversial issue. It is not universally supported in our community, and as you mentioned, it was not part of the ballot question, although some people want to make sure that we kill as few animals as possible, and I can assure you that our Animal Services staff are the folks that are really on the front line of that, and they want to kill as few animals as possible, hence our 94% save rate.
Mr. President?
Yeah, and Katie, I appreciate you coming to the council. My questions are more related to the actual tax and just want to understand, because I've seen some different proposals, what the current reserve fund is in animal control and what staff is currently proposing to the commission, if you can explain that to us, and whether or not the county has taken a position on this or not, the commissioners themselves.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spuraz. I'll be happy to explain. First of all, the proposal is to use two cents of the existing three cents of property tax rate to reduce that tax rate by two cents next year in 1213. So no action has been taken on that yet. That is a proposal that has been made to the County Commission, and to apply that two cents to other areas that are significantly underfunded, that are regional services that also have tax overrides, including...
Can I ask, I'm sorry, follow-up on that? So you're proposing for 1213 to go down to essentially it'd be one cent in the animal fund?
It would be a little bit less than one cent, because there's an additional component I'll talk about in a second.
Okay.
But yes, to lower the tax rate in animal services. Currently, let me just get the exact amount. Currently, the fund balance, the audited fund balance of the animal, it's a restricted fund, the Animal Services Fund was $5,649,115 at June 30th of 2011. The actual expenditures, the total annual expenditures are $4.158 million, so we have about a 116% fund balance in the Restricted Animal Services Fund. And Mr. Klinger is certainly as knowledgeable as anybody about government finance recommendations. Fund balance, you'd love to have a fund balance of about 16%, which would give you two months, roughly, of operating capital, and most of us operate with considerably less than that in government, but this is a 116% fund balance, meaning there is more in that fund balance, significantly more than it takes to operate for a year, and each year, with three cents of property tax rate and all of the fines and fees that come into that service, they bring in more than they need to operate.
And then to follow up on that, because I've heard the same thing, and to elaborate on Councilwoman Zadra's question about Mitch Snyder, very well-respected in the industry and certainly by, what cuts, I guess what the disconnect is for me is, here we're cutting services in the animal fund, because I'm being told that we've got to cut services across the board, but that fund, at the same time, you're cutting positions in the animal fund, you're, what does it take to really run it? Because you've got the money in the account, the voters specifically voted for it, and the intention was at the time to get it out of the Reno Police Department's hands, because it used to be run by the Reno Police Department in our jurisdiction, and now we're going back to the Sheriff's Office taking over animal control, which defeats the intent of what the voters approved.
Well, I can't comment on the voter's intent with regard to the law enforcement change, and you were much more involved in that at the time than I was, but I really can't share what the voter's intent was, because that wasn't part of the ballot question. But I do want to respond to your question about cutting services. We have been able, actually, and Barry can probably comment on this more, Mr. Broad can comment on this more clearly, because he's been jumping in with both feet to get into the service levels. We were able to cut vacant positions, and we did not have to cut service levels in the department in our service reductions. I provided some backup information to you all in the backup material, and we were, we have never, before this year, during all of the budget cuts that the county has gone through, we have never reduced any funding to animal services until this year. The reason that we proposed reducing general fund kind of support to the Animal Services Fund is that we had to cut everything else that supports animal services. Public Works has been cut by almost half. They provide the fleet management services, payroll, personnel, technology, all of the facilities management, all of the things that support animal services have been reduced. And so if we don't resize all of our operations, we have a smaller system to support everything else, we can't keep everything else at the same level. I absolutely understand the logic of, but they have their own money, why do they have to be reduced? Well, they have to be reduced, because as an organization, we're a smaller organization to help support them.
And then Katie, I guess the other concern is the, and have you got an opinion on the law? Once the tax rate is reduced, can it ever be brought back up to the level that the voters intended for the facility? Because I'm being told conflicting opinions there, so maybe it makes sense to do it for a year or two, because essentially, it's not a tax decrease. The commission would be raising that two cents for other services, as you said, but what happens when, you know, you're proposing taking two cents away? What happens in the future when that money is needed for animal control?
That's a great question, and as always, Commissioner, Councilwoman Spuraz, you've done your homework on this one. It is an issue, and we do have a legal analysis currently underway to see whether that is an obstacle, raising it later after you've lowered it. There are very few examples in the state of variable tax rates. You actually have one. You have one of the examples of a variable tax rate that's in a ballot question. Your 2004 Road and Street Improvement ballot question is a variable rate, and every year you set the rate that you will fund for that purpose. And so we have to get that question answered, and we will absolutely have to know that before we make that change.
Because I think that's my concern, and then also with the reserves, is there a way to do it with the reserves where it's a temporary, because I believe it's senior services that the county's looking at, where it's a temporary action, where you're not affecting the overall tax rate of animal control? Because I could see that becoming a serious problem in the future, where you lower it so much that they can't function.
Absolutely.
And I think the Humane Society has real concerns there, and then again, it defeats the intent of what the voters approved.
Absolutely, and that is exactly what the proposal is that we made on September 27th, when we asked the board for direction about what they wanted to do in building the 1213 budget. We said, "Do that for one year, because we agree with you. You don't want to lower those reserves to an unsustainable level." So that is the proposal, to do it for one year. But again, it will depend upon a legal opinion as to whether it can be raised again later.
I guess, I'm not asking the question correctly. Can the money, since you have the $5 million in reserves, can that transfer happen to the purposes that you're talking about for seniors without affecting that tax rate?
Oh, I see.
So those legal issues aren't there in the future?
Good, good question. No. We cannot and will not use reserves that are accumulated in the Restricted Animal Reserve Fund for anything but those purposes that they were collected for. So that reserve would be used for a temporary basis to fully fund the animal services operation for the one year that that two cents is reduced in their rate. So we would use some of those reserves for that one year, but we can only use those reserves for animal services. Those monies were collected for that purpose pursuant to the ballot question.
And so my final question, Mr. Mayor, and I could probably ask an hour worth of questions, but I'll wrap it up. On the indirect costs, Katie, because that was brought to my attention as well, and I know the city, we, there are certain groups where they feel their indirect costs are high as well. Can we get an actual breakdown on what animal control is billed specifically, like as far as positions? And you had brought that up, like Public Works, the, those other positions that have actually been billed to the animal control fund on the indirects?
Absolutely can do that, and we do base our indirect cost overhead on our federally-approved countywide, we call it the CowCap, the Countywide Cost Allocation Plan, and we do have that federally-approved because of our grants, just as you do. You have a federally-approved allocation rate, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, one more, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead.
Just on the Humane Society, Katie, discussion with them about actually taking over the entire facility, and I believe in your memo, you had talked about the enforcement standpoint, how that's listed in the NRS. If we work together with the county and the City of Sparks, because to me, they're in the business. I think these issues that you're bringing up, Councilwoman Zadra, as far as no-kill and those other issues, if the Humane Society were to take over operations, they're the ones who do it best. So is that something that would need to be done legislatively to change, if we were to move in that direction, to change the NRS as far as who actually picks up the animals? Because right now, I understand that's under the law enforcement function, but is that something that we could work on as a community to actually change that provision?
It's certainly something that we want to involve the entire community in, because again, it is very controversial. As you know, you know, people get more excited about their animals than their children, and we have had very vigorous debate among the public who have attended meetings at the County Commission about who should be in charge and what the role of Nevada Humane Society should be. The Sheriff's Office is very interested in looking at things that can be either done through managed competition, where we allow folks to compete for the bid, including employees to compete for the bid for providing that service. Nationally, when you look at best practices of animal service functions throughout the nation, it's not, it's not clear where the best model lies. Sometimes it is a public safety function, sometimes, you know, we had it under Public Works. There are other folks that have it in community development, because there are code enforcement issues that come up. There are a lot of safety issues that occur with vicious animals, with fights between neighbors about animals that are not being properly controlled or cared for. So we're actually very supportive of the sheriff and their community policing perspective about it. We're actually very excited about them taking this project on, but yes, there is an opportunity to have a community conversation about whether that operation, either you want to do both, that includes the enforcement side and the shelter operation, or shelter operation only. All of those things are certainly options to consider that we want to talk with everyone about.
Yeah, because, I mean, our facility here is nationally recognized, and I think a lot of that credit has to go to the Humane Society.
It does.
So I'm hoping, Mr. Mayor, that on February 6th, our joint meeting, we can really dive into these issues, because that tax rate, I think, could be a serious concern, because it's going down more than, I mean, what, 75% of what the voters actually approved? And I'm, if you go down to that, going down to one penny, you may not... And I'm, if you go down to that, going down to one penny, you may not have an animal control shelter, because you wouldn't have enough funds to actually run the facility.
Well, again, that's not our proposal. Our proposal is to use reserve funds for one year, and the proposal that the Board gave us direction to build the budget on, but again, the budget decision has not been made, is to do it for one year. Use reserves, keep the level of funding the same.
And I understand that, but that's why I asked that question. Once you do that,
Exactly.
I think, under the state law, it may prohibit going back up to what it needs to be fully funded.
You bet.
So certainly want to work with the county on the issues with the seniors and everything, but we also have to make sure that we have a facility and we're meeting the voters' intention on going below that mark of what it actually takes to operate.
Absolutely agree, and thank you, and I'll carry those comments back.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Azic.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions on just the process. I, I agree with your arguments that you can reduce it, because it just said up two. But I, I believe it's a two-step process. You can, you, the County Commission can, can reduce the fund, but in order to re-implement it, they have to vote to raise it again, correct?
That's not clear in law, and that's part of Councilwoman Zara's question.
No, I, I, I just, that's a separate question. I don't mean to reimpose it for animal control. I mean to lower it from three to one cents. You can do that, but the commission would have to vote to re-implement the other two cents.
Well, the commission adopts tax rates every year, just as you do.
But they, but that's a separate vote.
I thought you meant a vote of the people. I apologize.
No, I'm sorry. It's a, it's a two-step process.
Correct.
They can't just move that two cents over. They've got to vote to raise the tax again.
They adopt tax rates each year for each function, and we have a long list of things they adopt tax rates for.
I know you don't want to say it, but they're going to have to vote to raise taxes, because they're going to lower it. Because that's, and I'll tell you why I'm saying that. You keep intimating in your answers that Reno did not lower the tax rate, but we did, and then in a public meeting, we voted to raise them again. So
You reallocated them.
But you say in your thing that we did not lower our tax rate. We actually did.
You kept your tax, your overall tax rate the same, and that's the same thing the County Commission is proposing to do.
But we had to take another vote to raise that up again, as a vote to raise taxes, and that's what the commission's going to have to do. So the other part of that is, we can do that also, correct?
The County Commission is proposing to do exactly what you did, which is in setting your tax rates, you lowered it in one place and you raised it in others. You can do that in one action. It's not separate votes. You, you adopt tax rates, so.
But if, if the county reduces the tax rate, that leaves, frees up two cents under the cap that Sparks or Reno can also
No, because the county is adopting, is maintaining its overall tax rate. It's not taking two actions. It adopts tax rates.
That's where we're going to have an argument, because I think that's going to be incorrect. Because once you lower this rate that the voters approved, the overall cap is down two cents.
No, the, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be argumentative, Councilwoman. You all adopt a series of tax rates, and you take it in one action, and we, and the County Commission would be doing the same thing. And, and at, at one point in time, we actually had to raise, we had to lower the, the overall county tax rate to be able to meet the debt service for animal control several years ago, because the tax assessed value didn't provide enough funding for them to meet debt service. So we had to lower the overall county rate, but we keep the tax rate overall the same.
Well, even in your own argument here, you say that you can raise the rate 106% as the City of Reno can also, and I think that's where the argument's going to be, is I don't think the county can maintain from a voter-approved tax rate that they get to keep the two cents. Your action is going to be to lower that three cents to a penny that the voters approved. Then that becomes fair game for any entity.
I, I would absolutely disagree, but we can certainly have that conversation.
And who would, and who would decide that at the end of the day?
The, the county gets to adopt its own tax rates and is authorized by statute to do that, just as the City Council gets to adopt tax rates for its various purposes. And if there is tax rate available after that, then folks can adopt different tax rates. And if there are proposals that will take us over the overlapping rate, as you know, having sat on the Debt Management Commission, the Debt Management Commission resolves that.
I think that this one would actually go to the Tax Commission, if I'm not mistaken. But, so you're saying that the City of Reno can take a voter override on streets, and we can just say, "We're not going to spend that on streets anymore. We're going to move it to the general fund," without Debt Management Commission, without the City of Sparks, without the county, without anyone saying, "We can do that. We can just do that."
You, you do do it. You do it every year. You, you adopt tax rates for the purposes that you're authorized to impose taxes for.
That we're authorized to, exactly. Are you authorized to impose two cents more? You're authorized the three cents, because the voters said you can authorize that. Okay. I've laid out my position where we're going to have that argument.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask, are our attorneys or Mr. Chisel on that process? Because I think that is an important part of, of the overall discussion, is if that action is taken by the county, does it, does it then come back to the jurisdictions? I, I think that would be, I mean, do we agree with the, the county manager on that? I, I would like to hear from, from our staff on, on that issue.
Tracy Chace, Reno City Attorney's Office. I think your question has two implications, Councilmember. One is whether or not there is some type of breach of the inter-local agreement, and our office can certainly look at that, because there is specific funding in the inter-local agreement for animal services. As to the methodology of moving tax rates up and down, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Chisel, our Finance Director. But certainly, all three jurisdictions are a party to this inter-local agreement. I think the covenant of good faith and fair dealing is we should have discussions about how we move forward under services to our jurisdictions, respective jurisdictions. And in addition, if there is a dispute over a state law and its implications, there are avenues at the state that we can get that resolved at the state level and go in a collaborative effort, if everybody was willing to do that, to put a legal brief into the state or the appropriate agency to review it, rather than each picking a side. Or maybe we pick our own sides and go in and have that, that agency review it, whether it be the AG or, or the, through the process at the state, through the debt, debt process, so.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. I'm not sure I can answer the question on specifically how they could impose the tax rate for the county, but what happens is if a body, the county or the city decides to set the tax rate for ad valorem, it is set each year by that Board, such as the Reno City Council or the Washoe County Board, and according to 361-455, we submit that to the Department of Taxation as part of our budget. The county, this, the cap is set by the Nevada revised statutes at 364. So if Washoe County has a rate plus our rate, and it exceeds the 364 with the school districts and the state, what happens then is there's a mechanism that comes into place that it is referred back to the county commissions, the city councils, and all the boards, and they meet and decide on who's going to cut to be under that cap. And if the cap is not met, it goes to arbitration. So there is a cap that's set in statute, it's 364 per $100 of assessed value.
So, but I think the question is, Mr. Chisel, is if it's lowered, do then the other jurisdictions get input on if we go through our budget process and determine there's a need for other services to be met, just as the county is going through theirs, saying they've identified needs where, where they are lacking revenue, would be the question?
Well, if we did raise the rate and it came over that 364, it would go through that process of getting kicked back. We could, right now, we have about 1.3 cents available in capacity before City of Reno would be over the cap. For Washoe County, I think they're at the cap because of Palomino, General Improvement District is, so they're already at the cap. They can't change their maximum amount. We could go up like 1.3 cents. But if we went above that, we would be exceeding the cap, and therefore it goes into that state law that says through the process that they refer it back to the, the Boards and the commissions.
Okay. Mr. Guston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Simon, thank you very much for being here today to answer some of the questions. We do appreciate that. Mine are very brief, and I may have been, I don't want to be repetitive, but first of all, you said that the, the two cents you're looking for would be enacted in the 2013 fiscal year. Is that, if that's where you're headed?
That's, that's the proposal, correct, for just that year.
And is it the planning or thinking right now, where is that two cents? Is it, is it targeted to be part of the general fund, or is it targeted to be used in some other specific area?
Great question. Thank you, Councilwoman Guston. The proposal that staff has made, and, and the Board may have other ideas, but the proposal that staff has made is to supplement some of the underfunded regional services that also have voter overrides, such as senior services, child welfare, and libraries, that don't get enough funding, according to what we hear from citizens who rely on those services. And, and we have supplemented all of those services over the years from the general fund. So staff's proposal is not to have it go into the general fund, but to have it go to specific underfunded areas.
So it'd be, it would be targeted, because we had some people speaking last week at our council meeting, very specifically about senior services. There are some services there that would be dire cuts if they were made, so.
Absolutely.
So that is on the, that is at least on the, the talking board about where those two cents, that two cents revenue could be used.
It is.
Do you know if it's a high priority?
It is a high priority, and the commissioners are very, very moved to provide additional funding to those, to those services that are in desperate need of more funding, like senior services, libraries, et cetera.
I, I don't speak for everybody else, but I think that would, that would resonate very strongly with people in the City of Reno, if that were a possibility, if, if we get down the road and, and that's all determined to be legal, we can do that. So thank you very much for answering my questions.
Absolutely.
Ms. Zadra.
Katie, you don't need an answer on this one, because I can't remember the exact individuals, but I was also advised from the people who've called with concerns that they believe there's a conflict of interest with some of the Board members from the animal Board. So those are some of the kinds of questions, that the tax issues as well as the operational issues that we've brought forward, that later today, we'll be taking action to establish a task force that is, will be short-lived, will be just for the, the duration of evaluating all of these concerns, that will be well represented, it will not have an elected on it, that will be well represented from the community to evaluate the, the concerns and opportunities.
Great, thank you. And may I just clarify, Mr. Mayor, for, for Councilwoman Zadra, conflict of interest on, on which Board?
Your animal
The animal control Board.
Animal Control Board, right.
Okay, great. Well, I know, I won't put any words in the mouths of the Sheriff's Office staff, but I know they always welcome having community input on dealing with difficult community problems, so, and I don't know if you have a moment, if, if any of them would like to respond in any way to any of these questions or correct anything I've said from their perspective.
So this, this does, this will free up, by moving it over to the Sheriff's Department, this will free up, some of the reserves and stuff will help balance their budget, so you don't have to take general fund money to do some of it. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. No, we're not giving more money to the Sheriff's Office budget. Again, the notion is to keep the county tax rate the same, so there, there won't be two cents freed up. We would reduce the tax rate for animal services, and at the same time, in the same budget action, adopt tax rates that would support these other services. So that's, that's the proposal, but sorry, Under Sheriff Vinger, we're not giving you more money.
For the record, Todd Vinger, Under Sheriff, Washoe County. Mr. Mayor, Council, I, I just wanted to ensure everybody that, that's one of the things that we're very conscious of right now, is, is the financial part. We want to make sure there's a clear path between what funds go where, so that Sheriff's Office funds are operated on one side, animal control is operated on the other side. The other issue that we wanted to make sure that we clarified for the community is, animal control's not a real law enforcement function, and it's not our intent to turn it into any kind of a law enforcement function. And that was our intent to, to make the first step of placing a civilian manager to, to manage animal control, because it's a nationally recognized organization, office, and we want to maintain that, that recognition. We don't want to make any significant changes until we find out what's going on with the operation. It's our first intent to go out and meet with all the different Boards, the Council, the Commission, the, the public, Humane Society, and, and find out what's working, and, and then take very small steps. And we'd only take those steps if we were asked to by those different Boards and Commissions and Councils. It's not our intent to go in and make any dramatic change. The former manager I knew for many years, Mitch, was a very good guy. I honestly, I'm not sure about all the issues of, I do know that he had some, his reasons for retirement, and his reasons for retirement are his and his alone. It wasn't any of our understanding of why he retired, other than he, he decided to retire. But I just want to make sure everybody's, feels comfortable with the fact that, that because it sits in the Sheriff's Office duty and request to manage it, doesn't mean the Sheriff's Office has any intent to make any significant change to a very, very good operation at this time.
Okay. Any questions or anything?
Yeah, just a couple for Katie. The, as I understand it, the, the three cents for animal control is in your cap, right? It's in the 364?
It is.
So by
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead with your question, but let me clarify my answer when you're finished.
Well, go ahead.
Well, the 364 is our cap.
Correct.
It's everyone's cap. Our rate is $1.3917, and our rate would be unchanged.
Right, so as I understand, at least the materials that you provided us, the 364, maybe this is an oversimplification, you reduce the two cents, therefore the 364 goes to 362, and then basically you would then reset the rate?
I know this is a, this is a challenging part of the discussion. Our rate is not going to be $1.37. Our rate in 1213 will be $1.39. There will be, and as we have done, as I said, we've done, you know, we had to lower the county's general fund rate and increase the animal services debt rate, because there wasn't enough money to make the debt payment. And, and I know Mr. Klinger and Mr. Chisel are quite familiar with the adjustments that get made between debt service and other things, so those adjustments get made. Our, our rate will be unchanged next year, and it has been unchanged for many years. Our overall $1.39 rate would be unchanged.
Right, but I think the intent of the county would be is to free up that two cents that would allow you in 2013 to dedicate it to other areas, senior services, for example.
Yes, we would, we would increase rates in other areas, correct.
And then, let's say the opinion comes back, and it says that if you do reduce, you take the two cents away, that you cannot increase it. Do you have a Plan B if you want to try to fund senior services? For example, if, it's a special revenue fund, correct? It's not a general fund?
It's not a general fund. It's not a, it's, it is a specially restricted fund, yes. Senior Services is, child welfare is, library expansion
Yeah, it's a dedicated revenue source for a specific purpose, so could you, you, could you loan money to the general fund for senior services or for some of these other dedicated areas, assuming you cannot?
Very tricky. Different funds have different regulations, as, as your folks will tell you. We are, we have continued to support senior services and subsidize from the general fund for many years.
Right.
We don't have, at this point, of course, we're still dealing with a shortfall for this year. So at this point, until we have the complete sources and uses analysis that will come to our County Commission on February 14th, we are not, we have not identified available funds to increase those other funds in another way, if that answers your question.
But have you considered, if, if it becomes problematic to create that 2% that you're talking about, then can you loan, have you looked at loaning the money? And I think you'd have to repay it within one year, based on the regulations, but at least did it give you one year to budget the repayment, as opposed to cutting senior services 230 this fiscal year?
Yeah. Part of our problem is that without completion of our labor negotiations, successful completion of our labor negotiations, we're facing an $18 million shortfall next year in our general fund. So anything that we try to increase somewhere else means cutting something else. And certainly, you all make those trade-offs every year. So could, could we find $230,000 somewhere to support senior services? I hope so. It means we reduce somewhere else. And we'll be reducing everywhere to, to make up the identified shortfall.
Well, I'll make sure I, I understand the answer. So has the county considered looking at maybe doing a, a loan for whether it's senior services
at maybe doing a loan for whether it's senior services or out of the, out of the reserves?
It would not be my recommendation, and our reserves are also depleted. Our reserves are drastically low. Between the $18.4 million we are paying for the inclined tax refunds, we have borrowed from our risk management fund. We're, so our reserves are dramatically low this year. I would not be recommending to the board that they borrow from any other reserves. Where we will, where we will find the money is to reduce somewhere else in order to fund that, if we have to.
And then, and then the last question I have is, at least at the city, we look at, if other departments are providing services, so for example, Public Works provides services to animal control, can animal control allocate part of their budget to pay Public Works to provide that funding, so that Public Works could continue to provide that service?
They currently do. They currently do support, they pay some overhead, as the question was asked earlier. Animal Services does pay some overhead. But again, the county commission's direction to us in our financial sustainability plan has been to resize the entire government, and so that's where that direction came from.
Well, had there been any consideration, if, because they have that overhead component that's charged to animal control, if that's actually funded, that would free up some general fund money for senior services, would it not? Wouldn't that be an option?
If they were overcharged. But again, we are trying to, and we do carefully look at how those enterprise funds and special revenue funds can support the general fund. We try to be very mindful of where those things can legitimately be charged, and not make those decisions less than bright line, appropriate, and accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Dorch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of real quick questions. How much of the three cents would be needed to fully fund animal control if you weren't going to be drawn down on the reserves?
It depends on what our exact tax rate is next year, but, and let me get out the, just one moment, Councilwoman Dorch, let's see, get out that budget sheet. But our typically, a penny of tax rate countywide generates in the neighborhood of $1.2 million. It may be a little less next year. The, from last year's budget, the ad valorem taxes generated, the three cents generated about 4.2 million, and then there are contributions and donations, investments, fees, et cetera, that add up to the rest of the revenue. So, it depends on what the actual assessed value is for next year, what a penny will generate.
But the three cents generates about 4.2?
It did in 2011.
And the total budget is four point, I'm sorry, it was four point, was it 4.8?
The total budget this past year was 4.8. They actually spent 4.2 roughly.
Okay. So, you, so, taking the year off, taking, reducing the two cents, you're going to need the full three cents back to fully fund it in the future?
Correct. Or, or close to that, yes. And that is the proposal.
Okay, because I was, that's what I was going to ask, and I think I got my answer already, was if there was some room there, would you, even if you couldn't raise it back to the three, would you reduce it to whatever you would need for the future? And I, it seems like you're going to need it all for the future.
That, it's the proposal that we continue to impose the three cents in the future, or close to it.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. President?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to follow up on that. So, I make sure I understand, Councilwoman Dorch, your question. So, Katie, you're anticipating that the full three cents would be needed in the future to properly fund animal control?
Well, the, some of it will depend on what the assessed values do. But we're, the proposal that we made back in September, based on the projections we had for what assessed value was going to do, was to lower it by two cents temporarily, but potentially another .37 cents for a longer term. I'm not even forecasting about that, because there are too many variables that are going to impact that in the future. I believe that assessed values are going to continue, are going to begin to grow again after 1213. We're looking at them growing in 1314 potentially, or at least being flat and not losing more.
And then, there was a lot of discussion on the senior program, and I believe the cut was, what, 260,000?
It was 200 and something thousand. It's 260, 230, something like that. I don't have that in front of me.
So, even, let's just say, even if it was 300,000, and you're proposing taking two cents, that's what, 2.8 million? So, where's the other money going to?
Great question. There are a lot of needs in the library. We met with the Library Board of Trustees yesterday. We just got a report back from our Citizens Advisory Committee on the libraries. We have needs in Child Protective Services. So, the board will consider a variety of issues that are desperately underfunded. I would argue that law enforcement will probably be asking for some of that as well.
And I guess what my concern is, Katie, philosophically, is you're taking over 67% away for funding the animal control facility. That would be like the city of Reno taking a voter-approved tax, taking 70% away from the street fund to fund all of our other services. And I think that's got to be a discussion that we have with the joint meeting, because in fairness, that's not a pot of money to, I mean, we've all had to make those tough decisions. And I'm certainly sympathetic to what the county's going through. We're going through the same thing here.
I know you are.
But it comes down to what the voters intended, and maybe we get, I would ask our staff, and if we could get an AG's opinion on this, and potentially, the Department of Taxation, if they would come up with an opinion, because I would love to work with the county. Certainly, the senior issue is important, and I think temporarily, doing those things. But my concern, again, is for the long-term, Mr. Mayor, is literally, if you take away almost 70% of the funding, and then according to your own testimony, if we weren't able to raise that, if the county commission weren't able to redirect those funds back to animal control, you'd have to shut the doors.
Yes, and Councilwoman Sforza, again, if the county commission is advised legally that they would not be able to raise it again, my advice to them would be not to do it. And again, we are not going to cut the funding of animal services by that amount. We would apply the reserves that have been raised for that purpose for animal services. So, we very much welcome the legal analysis, and of course, as I said, you all have a variable rate as well, so we all need to have the answer to that question.
And can we do that from the city attorney's office? I mean, I know the city attorney has to request that opinion, but can we do that sooner rather than later?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, will process that on behalf of the city, on your behalf.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anything? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very much appreciate your time and attention, and you all know, call me anytime. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right, this time, we'll go to Adam D. Two, Secure Storage Technologies.
Mayor and members of the council, for the record, I am Patty Wade, consultant to Secure Storage, now doing business as Curb Systems. And this is their CEO, Kane Dutte. I just wanted to make just a very quick introductory remark to you, that we've taken on Curb after quite a bit of due diligence, both locally and around the country, and believe that they have a winning technology. But with any technology, you always have a few bugs as you're implementing it, and that's what we're working out now. I believe Councilwoman Azzie asked for us to give a presentation for Curb to do that for you, so we're going to do a very short, five-minute presentation and address any questions. But I do want to tell you that we have had resoundingly positive experiences with over 110,000 transactions and a couple dozen complaints. And of course, the complaints are what we want. We really do welcome that, and we really do want that for our feedback, to make sure that our pilot program is done correctly. So, we are on that, and we have talked to individuals, and I think everybody's pretty happy with where we're going. And I'll let Kane, I don't want to take his thunder, I'll let Kane go ahead and address you now, but I just wanted to let you know that we have been retained, and we are very happy to be working with them, and having them foster economic development here in Reno. And they expect, we expect that they'll go nationwide and be very, very good for our economic development and jobs creation here. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Kane Dutte, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. So, a quick background in this history, as the council probably remembers, you voted to implement a new parking system with Curb System last year. Some of the key points were that the system needed to be, you know, no net decrease in revenues to the city, it needed to be a system, you know, uniquely for Reno. We wanted to employ our new technology to get those savings, so we could do it at a low cost to the city, and obviously, we wanted to generate additional new jobs. Current status of 1,180 parking spaces in the city of Reno, Curb Technology is currently managing about 950 of them. We have run to date about 110,000 transactions through the system flawlessly. We're representing more than about 7 million minutes have been processed by the Curb System. So, the technology at its core is working fine. In October, we did, in spending a week with city staff, local business owners, and local constituents on a Q and A or process review. So, we spent, engaged an entire week to go through the system, tear it apart, what's working, what's not working, whether we need to change to be the system we promised it would be. And I'll cover all those in the next couple of slides. Finally, thank you. So, the E, no, go ahead.
Go back.
Sorry. So, the positive things that came out of the Q and A review were, and what we hear, when we do ask folks, we do spend time on the street, you know, interviewing folks about their experience, how the system worked, what was the high points. So, credit card payment is a huge upside. 85% of all the dollars run through the transaction are electronic. People tend to really appreciate paying from any kiosk or any phone. So, if you're walking, and you walk, after you park, you can pay from any kiosk, not necessarily the one closest to your spot. The other thing is, we also offer a pay-by-web option, which is taking off. So, people sitting in coffee shops oftentimes go to the coffee shop, open the laptop, and pay by web. Auto notification and time expiration has been widely accepted. We do provide receipts via the city website. You go to parking.reno.gov, and you can pull down your receipts. The other things that we get positive feedback on are speeded transaction. If you watch local people using the system downtown, you'll see a lot of people walk up, punch in their space number, swipe their credit card, and walk off, knowing the system will autocomplete. So, they have less than a five-second transaction time. And then finally, the flexibility to purchase what you want. The current system allows you to purchase any amount you want, up to the space requirement. So, if it's a five-hour limit, you can't buy more than five hours. The major challenges have been transitioning to the old meters. Probably one of the biggest problems has been the signage. We are compliant with NRS and the requirement to use MUTC standard signage. So, we are following state law and the federal regulations. However, it still has left some people confused on if they have to pay and where they have to pay. Confusion or transaction completion, the single biggest comment we had on the system was, we're not sure if I completed a transaction, so I swiped my credit card again, and was charged twice. We did address that short-term by providing an automatic refund. So, if you do, if you do two transactions back-to-back, you can simply call the system, put your space number, and then we'll take care of it for you, no questions asked. The remainder, I'll talk about how we're going to fix it going forward. Short-term implementation bugs, during, the system, as you know, is about three-quarters of, about 85% installed right now. During this period, we have a few bugs that we're still working out, mostly around power and communication issues. We also have some issues around public, you know, engagement and public information, which is one of the major reasons we've engaged Wade Consulting to drive that process and make sure we do it right going forward. And then, we've been made aware, there's been a few tickets issued erroneously, and that's obviously a worst-case scenario for our system. So, that is being addressed, you know, full tilt. The solution, like I mentioned, is getting the system completely installed. Once the system's completely installed, all the wireless network will be in there, which will solve most of any down issues, and also will allow the sensors to come online. Once the sensors are online, then we'll be pushing better enforcement data, which should fully solve the problem.
And the timing installation?
I'm sorry, and timing installations, we expect to have the system fully installed by the end of February. Communications, we did do the parking committee. We did spend a week talking to folks. Since then, we've also actively begun working with local merchants and talking to them. So, we stop in, ask them what their concerns and complaints are. It runs the gamut from people spending too much time outside their business, finding a spot that has time left on it, and moving their car. People complain they have to park on Saturday, which we've always had to park on Saturday. All we've done is bring parking above the level of consciousness, also user interface concerns. The biggest thing we get is clarifying the hours of operation. The number on the kiosk does it automatically. We also provide live support for that, and we will clean up the kiosk front screen, we'll show you in a few minutes.
Go back.
Okay. Did I get everything there? Power, oh, one of our bigger issues that we get complaints on is this kiosk being down. We've had some power issues empowering the system. We have worked very closely with city staff, who have been fabulous in helping us find better circuits. We have actually pulled thousands of feet of new cable through city conduit, which is now city property, and we've also cut partnerships with a number of local businesses to provide power. So, we are, we have rectified that to a very large extent. Once again, we think all this done by the end of February. Regarding the new user interface, the major issue that people had was they felt some anxiety or stress about where they were in the process. So, the existing system actually walks you through three screens to make a transaction. Working with staff and some consultants, what we've come up with is a screen that were, from the patron's point of perspective, they never actually leave one screen. So, from beginning to end, you can see the entire transaction. You can see where you are. As you complete a transaction, it turns green, or a step, it turns green, and you get a green check mark. So, right out of the bat, you can see, put your space number in. In this example, we actually added some complexity. We said it's a private lot, and we add some additional payment types, just to make sure the system was robust enough to handle something like that. Then you pay, and then the last step is you, if you would like to be notified that you're about to run out of time, it'll text you. So, it's a three-step process. You see it all on one screen, provides you all the rules and regulations right there, and gives you a roadmap that you know exactly where you are at any given moment. So, in conclusion, we believe we can solve all the known problems by finishing the install and rolling out the new user interface, which all should happen very closely in the month of February. We are very committed to proactively addressing these concerns. We'll continue to do that, to the point we've even engaged, you know, a top-tier consulting firm to work with us on strategic management, as well as public outreach. And we're very enthusiastic about the future.
I want to say one thing about the sensors, just because that was a question.
Sure.
About the sensors install, that's a part of it.
Okay. Patty's reminded me to mention the sensors. So, one of the major questions is when are the sensors being, because, you know, the single weak point in the system right now is designed to be a sensor-driven system, and the sensors have not been installed. As the last phase went in, we are now ready to install the sensors. They will all be being installed in the next, you know, three to four weeks, and the enforcement module flip over to a sensor-based enforcement module.
And I'd just like to add one thing, and that is that Curb is very, very committed to the city of Reno, the state of Nevada, to stay here, to make it work, regardless of whether they have to put more money in. They're very, very committed to doing that, to working with the public, and to creating an awful lot of jobs here, very skilled jobs, as we move forward and expand throughout the nation, which we fully anticipate will happen. Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions, anybody? Mr. Isaac?
Just a couple. Thanks for coming. I've had, I've had a lot of questions about it, and you're addressing most of them right here. On this screen that you have, are you going to have a spot here that says how much it costs to park, like 25 cents or a dollar an hour, or whatever?
It does. As soon as you enter the space, it doesn't show on step one, but as soon as you enter the space number, it'll give you the entire set of rules. So, here, you know, these are your options. So, it's going to cost you this much, it's this much per hour.
Okay, so before they enter, before they enter space number, they won't, no one will know how much it costs to park there?
Correct, because you can pay for any space from any kiosk. So, as, for a good example, the Second Street Lot and the Mill Street Lot costs, I think it's 17 cents buys you an hour on-street, buys you a dollar per hour.
Okay, so it's not just the ones that you're directed to? You can go to any...
You can pay from any kiosk or from any phone. So, you kind of have to get the space number to get the rules.
And the other question that I always get is this, the minimum charge for a charge card? Is that still going to be $5?
The minimum charge of the charge card currently is $2. The verbiage is a little confusing, so we do apologize for that. What, we set that notice on there and warn people, because a lot of people do what we just talked about, is that they walk up, put their space number in, swipe their card, and walk off. And the system, rather than let their credit card sit there, we auto-complete the transaction in 10 seconds if you don't do something. And so that's when you get the, so we just charge max time.
So, you charge max time?
We charge max time for the spots.
For default?
Yeah, for a default, if you don't put in, I mean, you can put in the amount of time.
For a credit card, you charge max time for the spot?
Pardon?
No.
For a credit card, you don't charge max. You can go $2 and up. It's a dollar an hour. But for the, but if it's a default, where they don't complete the transaction, then it would be max time, because something has to happen there. So, but this, we hope, will help alleviate any problems there, and any bugs.
The new interface gives you an option. It no longer will allow you to do that. So, folks are going to have a little bit longer transaction time. You're not going, you're going to have closer to 10-second transaction in the new user interface, because they're not going to allow you to skip any steps. user interface, because they're not going to allow you to skip any steps. So, the power user's going to have to go through, put their space number in, select the amount of time they want. And they're, and they're going, I guess that's the key point I should probably make here. In the old system, it mimicked a parking meter. So, your choice architecture was built around the idea of time. So, you bought fifteen minutes, seven minutes, whatever, three minutes is what a nickel bought you. We tried to keep that going through. What we learned is that people really didn't want that when they went into electronic transaction. They preferred to have their choice architecture set in terms of dollars. I want to know I'm paying one dollar, two dollars, three dollars. So, the new choice architecture is you have to pick a dollar, two dollar, three dollar, four dollar, five dollar. And if you don't pick something, you're not getting the transaction, so.
That's, that's.
The transaction will not auto-complete. So, for the power users today who walk up, swipe and walk away, we're going to do an awful lot of outreach, because they're going to be in the habit of, they'll do that, and it's not going to complete for them at this point.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it was a risk on both our parts. I think it was actually more work than you thought it was when you, when you took the, took the deal.
It always is, but that's half the fun.
So, I appreciate you coming back and working on it. I think there'll always be some bugs all the time to work out, but I really appreciate you taking it forward and, and listening to the complaints of, of the citizens and making those modifications. And we all look forward to this being completed, and we'll see how it goes there.
Any other questions? Okay. Yes, Mr. Guston?
I just have a question. Couple people, when it was colder weather and maybe in the initial installation stage, went to the kiosk and it wasn't working. What does a person do if they, they park their car, they need to go into XYZ store, they go to the kiosk and it's not working? They put, can they put a piece of paper on their windshield? What, what do they do?
Well, technically, they always pay by phone, or they can pay from any kiosk. So, if the kiosk has to be right in front of the store, then, you know, they can also call and talk to our customer service and we'll send a technician out as soon as possible. So, oftentimes, our technicians can be there in less than ten or fifteen minutes. Regarding if they can put, note on their windshield, I can't really speak to city Reno's enforcement policies.
Okay. So, they have to contact customer service if, for some reason, and, and they're, they're few and far between, I understand that, but the people that complained about, they went to the kiosk and it wasn't working. Now, maybe it was operator error, I don't know, I wasn't there with them. But what do they do if they encounter that, that it's not working, they need to park there, they need to go in that store, they don't have a phone on them?
They had, there are a couple of options. Number one, they can pay at any kiosk, not just that one, and perhaps we need to make that a little bit more clear. The second thing is that we were having some bugs that were with one of the suppliers, and you can talk a little bit more about what that is and, but we are absolutely prepared to make a change to make sure that we get a ninety-nine point nine percent success rate. So, that's where we're headed with it. We already have a pretty good success rate, but again, we know there have been bugs, and they're, Curb is committed to making sure that it works right.
Are you getting the?
If you would like us to work directly with staff?
I need you to talk to me.
Yeah.
If you would like to direct us to work directly with staff to, you know, support something like that, we'd be happy to do that, because we, we know when the kiosk goes down, we get notification of it. It does get pushed out to city enforcement personnel that the kiosk is offline. So, there probably is a way to do that, but if you'd like us to do that, we'll work on that.
Okay. And again, this has been a couple of months since I heard that, so I don't know if that's been worked out, but I'm just curious. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, E six, Adam E six, Mr. Frazel.
Yeah, I just need clarification from staff on this. So, they're going to be moving out of the building, but then that, so we're allowing them to get out of their lease with this, and the way I read it is, that would have consequences to us as far as the revenue. What is it, forty thousand annually?
Steve Hart, Steve Public Works, yes ma'am.
So, why would we do, why would we go forward with this and let them out of their lease?
My understanding of the deal, the shared program that they'd be working out with, with RTC, is that there would be some additional savings that, that the entities that are supporting the regional planning group would be benefiting from. There's some anticipated savings of about a hundred thousand that they would be savings with their shared program. And since the city of Reno provides about forty percent of that, they're estimating that that's possibly the savings that could be coming back to the city.
Well, before we approve this, though, with, because we have our bond debt service to pay as well, when we get something before we let them out of the lease, that we're going to realize that in, in at least a forty thousand dollar savings on, on the other side before we move forward with this?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. So, the, the agreement before you today, as you have stated, would allow them to terminate their lease earlier. They would end up paying through the end of June, through this fiscal year. Ongoing, they're anticipating about a hundred thousand dollar savings. So, if we were to, and since Reno pays about a forty percent share, if we wanted to reallocate the money that we paid to the Regional Planning Agency and put it towards 101 debt, we could do that. At the same time, we also would have space available that we would obviously try to rent as well. And we may end up getting additional income coming in from that space. But the, the option here today is that currently, we have this agreement with them that was through 2015. They've asked us if they want to terminate the lease. The terms that, that we've worked out is what is in front of you today.
So, can we add to this lease, though, its contingent on us getting that, realizing the savings from, and I'm sorry, I'm not on that board, so.
If I could answer that a little bit. What, what happened was, Regional Planning is working with RTC to do some work, so RTC will pay for some of that work done if they move over to the RTC sites, they can do some cross. By doing that, we can reduce the, the Regional Governing Board's budget by a hundred thousand dollars. And that's totally controlled by us in our budget session and the, and the regional planning. So, they can't guarantee it, because we have that other meeting where Reno, Sparks and Washoe County vote on the budget. So, we've already voted to, and we're going to do our budgets, but that was the anticipation, is we're going to vote on a, on a budget that would have that savings in it.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure that those savings would be there, because it's a loss to the city.
If I may follow your line of question, because I have the same question. It's, it's, if you look at the, the per monthly charge, twelve months, it's thirty-nine thousand nineteen dollars and twenty cents. We're talking about forty thousand, but it's anticipated. Can't we write something into the lease that, let's say that it doesn't make that anticipation, it makes twenty thousand, so they're still on the hook for nineteen thousand? I think we need to protect the city on the lease on this, rather than just let them out of it. I'm involved in leases, I have been involved in leases, nobody just writes it out, because somebody else is going to do something about it. I'm sorry, they made that commitment. But how do we protect ourselves that if that forty thousand comes forward, fine. But how do we, how do we protect ourselves that whatever portion of that forty thousand isn't paid, they need to, that isn't saved, they need to pay? I know Councilman Azic said that you control the budget. Do you feel that comfortable that, can't we put some hook on this, that if forty thousand saved, then fine? It is a wash for us, but if it isn't?
On either side, it comes out of the general fund. So, because we pay Regional Planning through the general fund, our forty percent share. So, when, once we cut that, we receive the forty percent on that. So, that was the whole proposal in bringing this forward, is that we would do that in our budget and, and make those cuts, so that, that would come back to us. I mean, we could put something in there. I don't know if it would matter one way or the other, because that's what's going to happen.
And then, obviously, if we lease that space, then that obligation is gone. If we lease it in September of next year, then that, that we don't have that obligation. But I just, I just feel, that's not the right thing to do, is to, to just cancel the forty thousand dollars, because we're anticipating a savings. Anticipating, in reality, to me, I hope those lines intersect.
Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, Dave, we don't set the budget. The governing board sets the budget.
That's what I was saying. The governing board sets the budget. Correct. That's what has to happen.
They tell the cities and the county how much, how much they have to pay.
That's right.
We don't set it in our budget. They tell us what it is, and we have to pay it.
The county tried to do that before and.
Right. Yeah.
Mr. Azic?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, because, I mean, we, we had a, a lot of discussion about this very topic. And it's possible we may, we might make some money on this, because once you re-rent the space, we see it, we see it, because we're paying forty percent of that, that rent, obviously. So, we lose it, but at the same time, we're seeing the savings too, by, in effect, consolidating with the RTC. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I don't know how other members are, but I think we should just let them out of the lease. In fact, the governing board is really us. We have the most members on it. I mean, Sparks will see, obviously, a benefit, and so will the county, but it's not going to be monumental on the savings that they'll see.
And just for the record as well, their lease that they pay to us is, is one of the lowest ones that we're seeing.
Right. It's below market.
Yeah.
Because we gave them a break.
That was part of the CB Richard Ellis report we had.
Right.
Mr. Frazel?
Yeah, I guess a question for our city manager, and I think it's all rosy to think we're going to lease this space, but how much vacant space do we have in City Hall right now? And how, how much time have we been spent trying to lease it? Because we have whole floors that are vacant here.
Councilwoman Frazel, we do have a lot of vacant space in, in City Hall, and we are actually, staff right now is looking at how we're utilizing our space. We're looking at the Sinclair Building as well, and looking to maximize the space that we do have, because we do have too much space, as this council is aware. I mean, we've reduced staff over the last couple of years, but we, we still have the same amount of space. And we, and we do have a difficult time, I think, renting space. I think part of it is the, the market conditions out there and the competition that we face from, you know, from other landlords in, in renting our space.
And just, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, we don't, if we let them out of the lease, we don't lose forty thousand. The most we'd lose is twenty-four thousand, because we still pay forty percent of that forty thousand dollars. So, we pay that anyway, whether if they stay here or not. So, we're just moving it from one pocket to the other. So, that's the difference right now. So, if we save forty thousand dollars on the other end, we're actually making money on it, because we're not paying that percentage of, of that.
As far as I'm concerned, however it's calculated, I, I just don't think we should zero out the lease. I think we should be guaranteed to get whatever that, if it's twenty-four thousand, whatever that is, and if it comes through savings, terrific. If it doesn't, then that's, that's the number that's owed on that lease until it's rented. That's where I'm at my position. So, if, if we can change that, terrific. If not, I, I won't support it the way it is.
Ms. Edgar, do you have something?
I think that we need to build in the guarantee that we'll get the full value. I mean, I appreciate the, the expectation that we will, but I think we need to have a, a recovery in case.
Okay.
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. So, Mr. Guston, you were no, and you were no. So, three no's, four to three. All right.
About time. First one for the year.
Now, we'll go. Now, we'll go to Adam F one. Do you want us to open this up and then, legal counsel, we open this up and then?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Yes, if you would open up the public hearing and then continue to February eighth, two thousand twelve, City Council.
Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. We received a letter requesting continuance to February eighth.
All right. Yes, Ms. Edgar, I mean, Ms. Frazel.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, before I vote for continuance, just want to disclose that I did find out recently that my cousin did write a, sign a petition in opposition of this abandonment. So, I do want to put that disclosure on the record before I vote for continuance.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, I, when this, when I found out this was happening, it was a December meeting, I believe it was, I consulted with our city attorney, Ms. Chase, and asking her to go to the Ethics Commission State of Nevada, because I do attend that church. My daughter graduated from the school many years ago, and what the, the condition would be, and I was told by, through Ms. Chase, through the Ethics Commission, that I need to recu, excuse me, I need to disclose, but not necessarily accuse myself. So, that's just upfront. I have also talked to both sides, people who are in opposition to this and people who are in favor of it, and we'll hopefully decide that on, on February eighth, which way that goes. But, so that, those disclosures have been made. I would like to move to continue this until the February.
Okay. I need to make a disclosure that I do go to church there. Our Lady of the Snows. It won't affect my decision one way or the other. And I should disclose that I have grandkids that go to Our Lady of the Snows. So, I will be checking with legal counsel before the February meeting.
Same, same disclosure, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's just a disclosure item, not a recusal item, because we had this issue come before us. It's just the continuance, but since everybody else is disclosing, I go to that same church and, and graduate at Lady of the Snows, so.
All right. We have four people before we take a motion and a vote.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I mean, I, I have attended that church. It's actually not my parish, but I have attended it, but.
All right, we, it does look like we're going to continue. I'll ask the people. Elizabeth Brenman, do you wish to speak, or do you want to wait until the February meeting?
I'm delighted to wait until the eighth, I would speak.
Okay. Thank you. Florence Lucas, do you wish to speak or wait until?
I will wait.
All right. Thank you. Daniel Lucas?
Always.
All right. Harold Lucas, thank you very much. Now, I'll bring it back to the table. We'll entertain a motion to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move to continue this until our February eighth meeting.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much. Sorry to have y'all sit here this long.
[inaudible]
Thank you. All right, resolutions. We go now to resolutions. Adam H one?
Resolution number seven, six, five, eight.
Resolution number seven, six, five, eight. Resolution for budget augmentations and approval of budget revisions, December first, two thousand and eleven, through December thirtieth, two thousand and eleven.
Cheryl, entertain a motion, or...
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, before we do. I just want to thank staff, Kate. This is very helpful to have, and, and Andrew as well. It actually breaks down what we're actually doing in these augmentations, so I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate it. I think it is much more transparent this way.
Any others? Cheryl, entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance introduction, I won.
Bill number six, seven, eight, six, an ordinance to amend Title V of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Privileged Licenses, Permits, and Franchises by amending Chapter 5.08 entitled Antiques, Collectibles, Pawnbrokers, which is misspelled, secondhand dealers in its entirety, and providing other matters property relating thereto.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J2, City Manager, Colocate, Washoe County Dispatch Center. Who's gonna handle this?
Daniel Johnson, Manager of Communications and Technology. This item has been in the works for a long time. The Shared Services Elected Officials Committee gave direction to the sheriff to establish a working group to look at the feasibility of the consolidation of dispatch, of the Incline Village PSAP with the City of Reno PSAP. That working group got together, clear back in, uh, before October, September, October timeframe, we started getting together and meeting. And through the process, as we started to look at the costs of combining the centers into a consolidated center, there were some cost issues where we found that the, the cost between the two centers would actually go up a little bit, in large part due to employee concerns with the differences in pay scales between the dispatchers at the Reno Ecom site and, and the Incline Village. So, as we worked through this, the working group, we came up with a, a recommendation to do a co-location. And with the co-location, we still remain our independent PSAP agencies, where Reno Ecom is still Reno Ecom, and doing the same services, and providing the same dispatch services to the agencies that we do now. And the Incline Village PSAP would still be their own agency doing the same services that they do, but we would bring them into our center. What that would do is create efficiencies, because now we're in the same room, rather than transferring the calls back and forth and not having the communication up and down the hill as we do now. We'll achieve some efficiencies by being in the same room and being able to coordinate any big event that happens, you know, with, as an example, the Washoe Fire Incline had some dispatch capability on that, as well as us for this recent fire, and the communications between the two PSAPs were not as efficient as they could be if we were in the same room. Some of the questions that the Shared Services Committee that came up when we presented this in December, in nineteenth, and they recommended us bring it to the commission and the city council, one of the questions was about a backup PSAP, because right now Incline is a backup for us, and then there's Sparks as well. Sparks is actually our backup at Reno Ecom. We are the backup for Incline, so if Incline moves down into our facility, should anything happen at our facility, Sparks would become the backup PSAP and take over. And we've got the technology over there to where we can move staff over there and continue dispatch operations. And likewise, we're also the backup for Sparks, and that would remain in place. So, the recommendation here, as it states, is that we approve the, them bringing the co-location in, and, and direct staff to start that process, so that we can work together, get them down the hill, get them into the facility. From the city standpoint, there is no cost to the city for this co-location. In fact, it would reduce our costs. We don't know exactly how much it'll reduce the cost right now. Our current agreement with that building, the interlocal agreement for that building is based off of square footage. The City of Reno right now pays seventy percent of the building maintenance costs, as it stands right now. They're doing the recalculations. We're in the process of that for the square footage that Incline would be occupying in the shared spaces. We anticipate that percentage from seventy to go down to anywhere from forty-five to fifty. An initial, it's, it's actual cost of the building maintenance, so for this last year is around a hundred and fifty thousand total cost to the city. It would drop to about a hundred and ten maybe, based off those percentage calculations. So, we'd be looking at a decrease in the cost to the city, so we'd be saving money. And then the Incline Village PSAP will come down, and then we'll continue to operate that way in a co-located facility.
Mr. Mayor, I only had, I only had one question, not on the maintenance, but on the cost of the, is it a rental and the maintenance on top that we pay? Or is it...
It's not a rental. The only thing that we pay for that is the interlocal for the maintenance, and it's the actual maintenance of the, of the building. So, Washoe County will provide us a, their budget for the maintenance for the year, and that's what we then budget right now seventy percent on.
Okay.
But then they don't bill us on what their budget is.
So, that automatically changes, so it doesn't matter to us, we just know it's a reduction.
Correct.
We don't have to open up any new agreement or anything. We could just get to do it.
Well, we, we'll make an amendment to that interlocal for that building, which we will bring back to the council once we have all the numbers in place for that, so that we know exactly what our percentage is. So, it'll drop from some seventy percent down to X percent. It's looking at about the forty-five to fifty percent right now as we do the space calculations.
Okay.
All right, Cheryl, entertain a motion.
I, I'll make the motion to accept the staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor. John.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much. Thanks for all the work, guys. Uh, item J3.
For the record, Maureen McKissick, City Manager's Office. This staff report provides the consensus of the process that began last November. These are the federal priorities for federal fiscal year two thousand and twelve. The report is organized into three specific areas, the community needs, regional priorities, and general legislative priorities, and we're seeking your approval today, and staff would be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, anybody? Staff will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item J4. Before we go into item J4, I have a couple of people wish to speak. Trevor O'Keefe. Trevor O'Keefe.
Step out.
Trevor O'Keefe.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. As far as the issue of item of J4, it has been my pleasure, as a part of Reno Occupy, to present to you a alternative to spending further money on the RTC Bus Center. We would ask that, that the Phase One spending of two hundred and nineteen thousand be withheld for thirty days, giving Occupy Reno the ability to submit a business plan and a possibility of lease of that site. And that's pretty much...
That's what you got to say, okay?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Thank you. Drew...
Chalk.
Chalk?
Chalk.
Chalk. Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, council members, and Mr. Klinger. My name's Andrew Chalka. I represent a group of local business owners, operators, and professionals who have expressed our interest into the Phase Two portion of the city center project through an initial lease and general proposal that we have, we've submitted to staff. Just as part of that proposal, we'd like to express our sincerest encouragement on the plans for Phase One, and certainly we look forward to moving forward and hopefully making this site the best possible site we can make it, hopefully working hand in hand. Thank you.
All right, no others, bring it back to the table. Ms. President.
Question, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Drew.
Drew, what was your proposal for Phase Two? What kind of use is that?
Our initial proposal integrates retail, as well some tourism aspects. We are currently in an investigative stage with certain partners, but we also have ancillary activities which would include potential art installations. We have at least one, one participant right now looking at doing some art, but it would be primarily of space use, about two-thirds retail, one-third which would be a privately-funded tourism office.
Okay, great, thank you.
Basically, this just transfers it to the RDA too, doesn't it?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and members of the City Council, the item before you today, J4, regards the former city center site...
Identify yourself for the record.
Kate Thomas, Office of Management and Budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a few slides, which if we want to, just for the...
Please.
Public certification, some shots of the site, so everyone can familiarize themselves with it. In December, council directed staff to prepare for an April fourteenth opening of the city center site to allow for public access and interaction with that site in preparation for the arrival of the 2012 U.S. Bowling Congress Women's Championships. And a process was already underway to kind of look at that site, and after meeting with the group and reconvening, it was, it was understood that a key component of making this site a success was a presence by the Reno Police Department. The Police Department was agreeable, and the plan before you, Phase One as we call it, was formulated to incorporate the downtown enforcement team in the south side of the property, which is the building that you see on this slide closest to the bottom. The PD component, along with the necessary improvements listed, are being deemed Phase One, so that we can reach that April deadline. And budget list, listed in the staff, the budget that's listed in the staff report has changed slightly since the report was submitted to you, the one that you have before you, and it's gonna be modified a little bit more as improvements kind of occur within that building. We don't have a solid price for what that would be to make the necessary improvements to get PD in there. The number that we have as of, I think this morning, was two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, of which we're trying to identify funding to make those necessary improvements to get the Police Department in that south building. Staff is seeking direction from the council today to proceed with the identified funding elements in Phase One, and that's all but the south building improvements that you see in your staff report, and direction for funding for the south building improvements with the idea that we will have some options for council consideration on the north building at the March twenty-eighth meeting. And I am here with members of the project team, we're available to answer any questions that you have regarding the site.
Yes.
Kate, you said, so the one ninety-six has grown to two ninety-five, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, the, the original estimate was for the south building, and that was before we had an architectural mock-up of what they wanted to do with that facility. So, if you go to the last slide, thank you. Whoop, one more back. I'll show you the revised budget up here. One more. There you go. So, as you'll see, the, the one-time capital investment of three hundred thousand dollars, which was a guess as of this morning, and it's since changed, bumped down. I will note that that number does include demolition. It's an estimate by a local developer as what it would cost to put into place the plan that the architects had come up with for putting the bike team in there, and the downtown enforcement operation out of there. We anticipate that we can operate or perform the, the demo piece of it through Public Works, which would save us a good portion of cost off of that number.
And then, under the security, you've got security, an annual cost of sixty-five thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm. And that's based off other agreements that we have with the, the CAC, and I believe the West Street Market, the cost for that.
Have, have we had any conversations with RTC to see if we could work with them? Because they've got security over at the RTC site a block away, that, I mean, because it's what I, obviously the concern would be having security throughout the night, so that we don't have the homeless camping out there. But is there anything we could partner with RTC to help bring that cost down?
Absolutely, Councilman George, and that's something that we are looking into. Again, these are kind of rough estimates right now, as we proceed forward with these. After we have council approval, should we gain that today, we can move forward with solidifying those numbers.
And then out of that two hundred and ninety-five thousand, how much of that is eligible for the capital surcharge, the two dollars?
It's my understanding that the entire amount would be eligible because of the, the greater purpose that having that police element, that would, would serve the...
The tourism piece?
Correct.
Because it's gotta be related to tourism, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so it would allow for that site to be...
Have we looked at that, John?
Operable as... And we can...
Because we actually lost quorum at the last Capital Surcharge Subcommittee, but with the remaining people that were there, we talked about this. Everyone's very supportive of getting this thing opened up, and, and cleaning it up, and moving forward. So, I don't, I don't anticipate that there would be any issues. You know, we didn't talk total numbers, but everyone was extremely enthusiastic about getting it cleaned up, and getting something in there, and having some activity there before the bowlers get here in April. So, I, I, I think, I, I really think we can get that, I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are, Mayor, but, I mean, I think, I think we can get that, at least a big portion of this through the...
There are people that are privately interested in making a donation to make this happen also, so...
Right.
Those are things we need to do, and we'd be coming back.
I mean, I just think, whatever it is, whatever it is, we need to get going.
That's right.
I think we need to get going if we can make that April date.
And I think the thing that Mr. Azzi has been working on and talking about also could be done. Mr. Azzi?
Yeah, I think part of that too, is this is only one building, Dwight, so if they, if we can use the federal forfeiture to help this one, it would be less on the other one.
Absolutely.
So, I think overall, we're, we're all saying, let's move ahead with this.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't know, however we have to carve this up and make it work, I think...
So, this is just sort of giving the staff the permission to move forward on it, and then bring us back the final stuff, or actually, because we have to hurry. So, I don't know whether it, it would authorize staff to just start working on it with this, not to exceed this amount?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, I don't think we're gonna have another meeting before our February eighth meeting. I guess we could probably schedule one.
Well, we can call a meeting for the, before the February eighth meeting.
But we're gonna have other items from the Capital Surcharge Subcommittee on the February eighth agenda, so we could just include this also. I think we're gonna get a report, an update on what the architects have done up to date, where we're at on the Hall of Fame, museum.
And following up on that, is, you said you're not gonna come forward until March twenty-eighth with the other one. Is there even a rough idea of how much you might, so we could deal with this, they know total, what it might be from the surcharge?
For the record, Kate Thomas, Office of Management and Budget. The reason we had put that later March date in the original staff report was because that was when we anticipated, knowing about the Heritage Center grant that we were seeking for that north building. As you've seen today, there has been a proposal submitted yesterday for use of that north building, and I anticipate if this goes publicly announced, there might be some interest based on the Phase One improvements that we're looking at doing in the police presence in that north building, so we might have some options for your consideration.
Well, let me throw a fly in the ointment, then. We have the, the police thing in the bowling stadium, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If, if I've got a proposal for both of these buildings, if we put some more money into that police, would that serve the surge team? Or would we rather be out there in the middle of everything? We sort of tried to fill it in with police, just to get someone there.
I think it'd be great.
Sure, for the record, Deputy Chief Dave Evans with the Police Department. Yes, we believe that this, that this location, it's more visible, I, we think the, kind of the sphere of influence will be there to, to kind of help the downtown area a lot more than where we currently are, which is kind of hidden and it's, and it's currently closed to the public. So, this option will allow us, even a public option desk for information, online reporting, and with our surge operation, we've dedicated and earmarked over two hundred thousand dollars in federal asset forfeiture money to run operations out of that.
And just tell everybody a little bit what you're planning on doing out there with the surge team.
Sure, so, uh, we, we did a little bit of this over the summer, but kind of a combination of things. We have our downtown enforcement team working on kind of a CCTV collaboration with all the hotels down there. This will be kind of an increased police presence, where we'll put folks down there during the busy times to kind of watch and identify problem individuals or situations that are kind of evolving, and, and they'll get involved with that. They'll, they'll be visible, we'll run undercover operations along with that. We also, of course, will continue to utilize the CSAS team that can work out of that area. Our patrol, our patrol officers will use that for a report writing, rather than going into the downtown or the main station. It'll allow them to have some more visibility down there. So, the, the surge operation, where we're talking is two hundred thousand dollars, really is gonna encompass all of those programs. But with the downtown, business owners are gonna see a lot of visibility, you know, increased in, in us down there with our CAO teams dealing with the kind of systemic issues, and, and really, I think we're gonna, we'll do a good job cleaning it up. We have, we, we did do that over the summer, and we saw a tremendous improvement with crime associated with downtown, so...
And part of that is, a big part of that is not just police presence, but code enforcement and, and all business license...
Sure, it's, it's gonna be a complete collaborative effort, and, and we will utilize all those resources. But this is a good location for us to operate out of, and, and in, in kind of a response to what the city is looking to do down there, we think we could be a good partner.
And save officers, that we might have some down there helping out a bit, too?
Yep, we'll, we'll staff the desk, we'll save officers who can assist in answering questions, we'll provide online reporting, kihos in there as well. And then we've also discussed with, with city staff, other city services that we can put in there to make it a little bit easier for the community or tourists that, that want to come in.
Great.
Yes, Ms. President.
Yeah, I guess just a question for Councilman George, because the staff report, because of the timing we're gonna be taking from stabilization right now, but is it your anticipation that the, the committee is in favor of moving forward with expending the two dollars surcharge to move forward with this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, we haven't talked numbers yet, but I, I mean, they're, they're very enthusiastic about getting that area cleaned up.
Great.
And at the end of the day, it's still our decision. I mean, it's, I mean, it's still our decision.
I mean, it's a win-win.
Right.
It is a good thing.
And the only part of this is stabilization, and I see on the staff report is fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I think it was just a loan until the cert, the committee met, is...
Right. Well, we're called an emergency meeting of the committee.
Yeah, we can, we'll get a meeting, we'll see if we can get a meeting before the eighth.
So, so win-win.
But staff should keep moving straight forward.
So, I'll move to approve staff recommendation with the modified budget, the one that's on the screen, to start moving forward and identify the funding sources in the interim, but to go ahead and keep working.
That's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll go down.
You know, on that too, Mr. Mayor, I might have, Kate, I might have Joe Kelly call you. He's going down to make a presentation on Saturday to the bowlers. He might want to include this, because this has come up when, when he's talked with them in the past. So, I think it'd be a good idea to update them on what we're doing there, too, so that they know.
I think, I think that the tourists are gonna be tickled to death to see.
Absolutely.
Somebody should clean that. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chace Reno City Attorney's Office. We pulled the exact language of the ordinance, and it looks like the $2 would be available through the process.
Good, perfect. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Adam J. Fives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. This item today is just asking for council direction on creating and bringing back some options in creating an alcohol overlay district in the downtown area. The purpose of the district would be to use a different fee schedule for alcohol licensing fees in that area to help offset costs of public safety and maintenance of the downtown entertainment core.
Well, I think it's something we need to look at. Mr. Azzi?
Mr. Mayor, could we open up L-6 along with this? It's sort of the same thing about underage drinking and that we had at my Neighborhood Advisory Board, and they had discussed that, so some of this was discussed there.
Sure, we can discuss both of them at the same time.
So I wanted to talk about these, because I think it leads into what the rates might be and what we do. One of the things that they discussed is, and I didn't know this was available, there's one computer you can get that you can scan up any driver's license, and it tells you whether you're underage or not. And they're about $600 to $800. And whether we require privileged licenses to have this, if they sell alcohol, I'm more of the punish the evil doers sort of, if they get caught like two or three times or something, put that in the fine schedule that they're required to have one of these at the end of the day. But that was a really big recommendation from the Neighborhood Advisory Board, that they, that they do that. We incorporate that into this discussion. There was also another interesting thing that one man said that in one state they made a law, I don't know whether we could do that here just in the city of Reno, is require them to ask everyone for their ID, not just if you look underage. Just have a requirement that you're required to ask everybody all the time for their ID. And it's, you know, for me...
Very flattering to me.
It'd be an inconvenience, but I think that helps them, too. I don't know if we legally could do that. And the third part was, what is to follow up? By increasing the fees and fines, though, are they really getting those fees and fines at the end of the day? You know, you go give someone a ticket or, and then they go to the judge or whatever, and they get it reduced to reduced. It doesn't help us to raise these fees if at the end of the day they get reduced, or fines, I mean. But we're talking here with the overlay, is maybe just increase the fee for a license also.
That's correct.
But I think we also ought to look at the penalty phase, too.
Yep.
With that.
Any other discussion? I'll take a motion on J-5, and then I'll take a motion on L-6.
Well, I'll make a motion on J-5 that we move forward with that, but we just incorporate the penalty phase and these scanners into the, because they're going to come back to us with the proposal, that these be incorporated into the study for discussion.
Have a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L-6. L-6. Somebody give me a motion. Mr. Azzi?
Oh, that was it. We got staff time there, Mr. Mayor, so we're fine on that.
On L-6?
Yes.
All right. Now we go to, let's throw something away, boards and commission?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the access board is my board and commission, and I understand that they recommended the appoint of VK Ramon. So I'd make that motion to appoint Mr. Ramon.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Forestry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the forestry commission is growing.
I would like to appoint Mr. Edward Hawkins and Mr. John Peck.
Second.
Have a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of future agenda items? Mr. Guston?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a future agenda item someplace here, an L item regarding, at the downtown police tax district, we talked about this months ago, and it resurfaced in November, about the belly dumpsters downtown, and we had legal look at it, et cetera, and the police tax district wanted the city to buy the dumpsters, but that's not in the cards right now. But we did have property downtown who said, if we can advertise on those, we would be willing to put up the money. So I just want to put this on the agenda because I'll be working with the people and the police tax district and the downtown property who said they may volunteer to do that, so we can bring that back and get those dumpsters. But we had to check with legal, and legal found out that it is legal for us to advertise, the city to advertise. Well, anyway, it's an L item for the future.
Any other items? Future?
Yeah, I have two of them, Mr. Mayor. One is a presentation on the smart meters by John Seymour from IBW, wanted to make a presentation to council. And also, a, I have a proposal that I'd like on the agenda for June, future agenda item for next council meeting, for a community build a park day, just like what happened at Oliver Montello with the Instant Park, for soccer fields at Moana Park.
So I was going to add the same one on the smart meters, but I want to give a little more information, so maybe we have some there. Is, Mr. Seymour's concern is that there are people putting in the meters are not required to get city licenses, and he contends that by our ordinances, they are required to get city licenses. So that's what the issue, so I don't want to postpone this and let him give a presentation and look into it, but that's the issue about who has to be licensed to put those meters in.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we actually have that information. I, too, got John's email, and I spent time yesterday with NV Energy, and Barb has been following up on the licensing piece, and it's...
So we'll cover that next week?
We may or may not need to. I mean, it's, go ahead.
For the record, Barbara DiCiano, Neighborhood Services. In reviewing Mr. Seymour's email about, there were two issues. One was prevailing wage, and one was the smart meter and journeyman cards. In talking with NV Energy, there's a portion of the meter that from one specific area is NV Energy's responsibility and not within our jurisdiction. The other is reviewed by the City of Reno Building Department. The part that they're working on is NV Energy jurisdiction, but the contractor that is doing the electrician work does have a state of Nevada license, and the applicants that he reviewed to work on these are all, were required to have journeyman cards. So, and that's what the regulation was.
And I think that's what we need, maybe some, the attorney to weigh in why we need a presentation, because that still doesn't relinquish them from the requirement of getting a Reno city card to operate in the city of Reno. Just because, just because they work for NV Energy, because they're actually a subcontractor of NV Energy, they don't work for them directly. And so that's what I think we need to discuss about what our ordinance says on that. I know that's NV Energy's...
No, but I am working with staff to determine if they have a Reno, city of Reno business license, which is part of that as well.
But each individual person also is supposed to get a card from the city to work on electrical devices in the city of Reno.
I would like that presentation to stay, I think, so we can have that discussion.
Okay. Let me see where I am now. Liaison reports, or anything else on the future gen item? Any liaison reports?
I'd like to know specifically on Tom Wa, Councilman Azzi, what happened there with the...
Tom Wa voted to raise the rates last week on the basic fee that everyone pays. Trying to remember the exact amount. It depends on how big your water line is, but I believe is a 3% increase. We didn't get any public comment opposed to it. We had our first meeting. It didn't pass unanimously, but it passed. Any reports from conferences or professional meetings? Item L-4, discussion for adoption of resolution for the creation of a regional animal services task force. Councilman Zadra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was brought forward, and we discussed it, of course, a little bit earlier today. And staff has, I think, done an excellent job. We've met a couple of times in identifying generally the issues that the task force would be able to evaluate and make recommendations back to us. And if you want to give some greater detail on that, please do.
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, Barbara DiCiano, Neighborhood Services. In reviewing the oversight of a possible task force, there are a variety of issues that they could look at as far as operation goes, animal health, customer service, animal safety, and interaction with the citizens. So there's a variety of issues that they can review and report back on. In the staff report, it was recommended that there be a small group with some subject experts and a number of citizen involvement. So, and it would just be from the time that it was empowered through looking through these specific issues, and then it would sunset after they made the report to council.
I move that we move forward with developing, identifying a task force to bring back recommendations for action.
Have a motion? I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item L-5, resolution in support of a constitutional amendment or other legislative actions.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chace Reno City Attorney's Office. If we could go back to 401, there is a resolution creating a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That would be Resolution Number 7659, Resolution Creating a Regional Animal Services Task Force as a Recommending Body to the Reno City Council on Matters Relating to the Operation of Washoe County Regional Animal Services.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, item L-5.
That would be Resolution Number 7660, Resolution in Support of a Constitutional Amendment and Other Legislative Actions Ensuring that Only Human Beings, Not Corporations, Are Endowed with Constitutional Rights and That Money is Not Speech, and Therefore, the Expenditure of Corporate Money to Influence Electoral Process is No Longer a Form of Constitutionally Protected Speech.
I have some public comment on this one. Alan Burton. Alan Burton. He is in favor. Dave DeLucci. He is in favor. R.A. Drew. In favor. Raymond Silva, Ramondo Silva?
For the record, my name is Ramondo Silva. Mr. Mayor, in absentia. Members of the City Council, thank you for your undivided attention. I am not a corporation. I am a human, and you represent me. Respectfully, you are not leaders, you are not above others, you are representatives. You were elected to your positions by we, the people. We, you serve we, the people, the people of the city of Reno. There are no other interests that supersede your duty to serve us. When you gather and meet and arrive at consensus, you are doing the people's business, our business, to the exclusion of all other interests. You have not been put in place to champion any other cause, advocate any other interest, or affirm the influence of fictitious entities as you do the people's business. The only reason you are here is because of we, the people. There is not a single corporation in this room. That is impossible, because this meeting is of, by, and for the people. The construct of corporations is inferior to humans in every way, on every level, and the denial thereof constitutes a fundamental ignorance of the meaning and importance of the human condition. The framers of the Constitution of the United States and the Bill of Rights, and those who crafted the amendments, did not do so for abstract constructs like corporations. These rights were not affirmed for fictitious entities. These affirmations were expressly intended to apply only to humans, to we, the people. They were written to prevent oppression by a system. The idea of corporate personhood is absurd. The idea the Constitution of the United States applies to fictitious entities is absurd. The idea that a corporation has a right to free speech is absurd. The word "corporation" is nowhere to be found in the Constitution. There have been no laws granting these rights to corporations. There is no presidential executive order, no Supreme Court decision that affirms the application of these rights to corporations. Albany, New York, California, Berkeley, Boulder, Colorado, Los Angeles unanimously, New York unanimously, the list goes on and on of cities that have essentially said corporations are not people. Your choice is clear and must be made now. You either stand with we, the people, and reject corporate personhood, or you have no business representing us in this chamber. I now ask that those present in this room that agree with me, stand and be counted.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Trey Abney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of this council. For the record, Trey Abney with the Chamber of Commerce. The chamber strongly urges you to reject the resolution before you today. This is a direct assault on the free speech rights of our members. There are several issues here, so let me try to go quickly through them. This is about freedom of speech. The Citizens United decision simply said that corporations and labor unions and other groups can spend money to get their message out to the public. They are still not allowed to give directly to federal candidates. That did not change. This resolution, as written, would state that groups such as the Sierra Club, NAACP, PLAN, and other various organizations could not exercise their free speech rights. This language does not just apply to corporations. The largest single spender in the 2010 federal election cycle was, asks me, the public employee labor union. They spent more money than did any single corporation or interest group, including the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. The focus on corporations here seems very misguided. What is a corporation? It is simply a group of people. It makes absolutely no sense that, for example, Mr. Keschel and I would each individually have free speech rights, but once the two of us got together, we lose those rights? We have no right to assemble and make our voice louder? This resolution does not get rid of all corporate speech. It would still allow The Wall Street Journal, The New York Times, Gannett, Disney, General Electric, and any other media corporation to exercise and spend as much as they want on speech, all under freedom of the press. Does this council really intend to state that certain corporations should have carte blanche free speech rights, but others should be muzzled? Now, Mr. Azzi may want to ask me if I really believe that corporations are people. He may ask if corporations should then be allowed to vote in public elections. No, they should not, but you know what? Not every quote-unquote "real" person is allowed to vote either. Those who are under 18 can't vote, those who are convicted felons can't vote, those who are not citizens can't vote. We do place limitations on citizens in regards to voting rights and other things. Are we then really prepared to argue, as Section 1 of this amendment does, that corporations or other groups should have no constitutional rights whatsoever? Read this closely. This language does not just refer to the First Amendment. Does that mean that corporations do not also have Fourth and Fifth Amendment rights? Can government barge into the El Dorado, or IGT, or any other company without a warrant and take computers and furniture and other property? Are we really saying here that when people decide to join together in a group, they lose all the constitutional rights that they enjoyed as individuals? The Constitution was crafted by our founders to limit government, not limit the freedom of its citizens. Every amendment, save for one, was crafted to provide more freedoms and more liberty to individuals. Do we really want to enshrine a muzzle into that sacred document like prohibition? Again, the chamber strongly urges this council to reject this resolution and support freedom of speech for all, not a chosen few. The answer to speech we don't like is more speech, not less. Thank you.
Thank you. Have another public comment cards, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Abney, can I ask you two questions? This is sort of a fun thing for me. So, not to answer your questions, but the whole thing. So you're saying, then, that if any corporation is found guilty of a felony, they should lose these same rights?
A corporation, if found guilty of felony, they have the penalties and...
Should they lose their rights like a regular person does?
To, well, they don't have a right to vote, corporate...
Other, other things that they can't, they can't be a dentist, it can't be a barber in Nevada. So if a corporation is guilty of any felony, that corporation could not own a barber shop.
I, we'd have to talk about that. I don't know the ins and outs of it.
You were making the...
That's a fair, that's a fair argument.
And then the other one was, did the, did the Chamber of Commerce vote on this?
The Chamber of Commerce, local Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, tell you to come down and do this. Did they have a vote of their board, of their corporation?
My Business Advocacy Council, which guides my public policy pronouncements here, we had a discussion and exchange yesterday, and I was given full authority to come down here.
So, but the chamber didn't vote?
The Chamber Board did not vote on this, but...
So you didn't...
...to our procedures that we have for public policy purposes.
So you didn't, my, my point is, you didn't get authority from your entire chamber to come down here, but you still, you have the right to come down here as an individual to say whatever you want. So how would us, by adopting this, change how you actually came down here and voiced your public opinion?
I could come down here as an individual anytime I wanted.
Correct.
But this would include chambers of commerce and any other group that say that they could not participate fully in the political process.
They could send someone, they could send someone just like you to come down and say what they have to say. This doesn't affect that. It doesn't stop them from doing the same thing.
It doesn't stop any corporation or any other group from coming down here on the microphone during a city council meeting, that's correct.
Correct. In fact, what we do today doesn't affect anybody.
It does affect their ability to get out their message through free speech means, through ads, signs, whatever you're spending money on to do that.
Okay. Thanks. I'll move to adopt, Mr. Mayor. I don't see a reason why we shouldn't do this. In my discussion with Mr. Abney yesterday, he thought it should be expanded to unions, and I may be agreeable to that too, but he didn't ask to expand it. Right now, we have something in front of us that I'll move to approve.
Further comment or questions?
Do I have a second first? Anybody want to second the motion?
I'll second for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Ashup.
Yeah, I understand that there may be other cities that have adopted the same resolution. Has our staff had a chance to look at exactly what those other cities have done?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, no, this is an L item, so this is the first time it's coming through the council process. We have not done any outreach to other cities or see what process or reasons why they adopted it, and also so council is aware the city of Reno is a municipal corporation.
Right. And I guess the city attorney really hasn't reviewed the legal aspects of this either?
Again, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, no, we have not looked into the legal aspects of this resolution.
Okay. At least from my perspec- I have one side that says reject, the other side says adopt. I think I would need more information before I made any decision, so that's at least my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm not going to support the motion. And I agree that if you were going to do it, it should include unions, but I still wouldn't support it, so don't make that change on my behalf. But I think if you are going to do it, I think it's got to expand out. I don't think you can say a corporation cannot make contributions to candidates, but unions can. I think that's- I just don't see how you make that connection, so.
Anybody else in the other discussion? Yes, Ms. Frazza.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Mayor, what my issue is, and I think what I've heard from people is really the issue of the super PACs, and it really comes down to transparency. I mean, really, that's where the issue lies. If someone's going to disclose regardless of a corporation or an individual or a union or anybody else, everybody who's sitting at this body, when we accept a contribution, that is disclosed and there's transparency in the process. I think where the concern is, is really with these super PACs and people bundling money without the public having knowledge or exposure of who's donating to- well, they're not donating to the candidate themselves, but who's putting out that message. And so, I think that's- I guess, I'm with Pierre a little bit. I would need some more information, but the way it stands, I think everybody has their right to do it, but I believe it needs to be transparent. The process needs to be transparent.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Guston, you had anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to it. I think it's too narrow for me also. I think the- I understand the spirit, and I do agree with the spirit of it. I certainly do. And as Councilwoman Frazza just said, I'm deadly against the super PACs and the money that they're putting in and the influence they're trying to gain from that, and transparency is part of it. I just think this is- I- the spirit of it, I agree with, but I just- it's just too narrow for me to vote this time.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Yes, Ms. Edra.
I share the transparency concern as well, and we clearly, at least at our governing board level, report, and we have a new process through our Secretary of State that has even improved our reporting process even better. But for me, we took an oath, I took an oath, when I accepted this position, when I was elected to the position, to uphold the Constitution. And upholding the Constitution is protecting everyone's right to free speech, not just a select group.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do you have another?
Yeah, I just, with Councilman Hashup mentioned, I- that's what I'm unsure of, of what this resolution does. Does it then prohibit all these groups, as Mr. Abney brought up the issue during public comment too? So, I'm just concerned what the language is and what those ramifications are.
Well, this resolution specifically says, that's why I'd like legal to at least take a look at it, that the Citizens United decision superseded state and local efforts to regulate corporate activity. So, I don't know what this resolution does for us, given the fact the Supreme Court has already ruled on the issue, and maybe there's another way to look at it. I would just like more information before I take a position, one side or another. So, I'm not going to support the motion, Mr. Mayor, but I would support a motion to have staff review it.
Mr. Ashup.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, I think that the issue here is, if we adopt this, it doesn't do anything. It does- it just adds our voice to make this part of the dialogue of what the country's talking about, exactly like we're doing here. It brings in the public's attention that this is the discussion it should be having. So, that's why I'm glad we brought it here, and that's all it does, is make it something of discussion.
Well, it does say that we would support a constitution to the amendment to the Constitution of the United States, and that we'd have to have a constitutional convention to do that.
Right. But I mean, so then it would really- then it would really be hashed out at that place.
All right, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and withdraw my motion, because I don't want to see the motion fail based on- I would like to get more information.
So, you have a second?
So, I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay. Does anybody else want a second?
Would I second and vote against it?
Yep. You want to- anybody want to make a second to the motion?
A second, so we can have the vote.
All right, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Motion carries unanimously. Six- no, excuse me, six one. Six one, I'm sorry.
They're a big corporation beating up the little man.
There he is, yeah. Big corporation. Show the votes, six one.
One six.
One six, all right. All right.
So, I'll make the motion that we refer this to staff, because I would like to know from a legal perspective, you know, what are we dealing with? What are the unforeseen consequences? So, I'll make the motion to refer it to staff and-
Okay, we can make that an agenda item under the agenda.
Yeah, we've already- we can go back to that agenda if you want. That's fine.
Okay. All right, item L seven.
We did that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
No, no, I'm sorry, we didn't. L seven is, I was looking at our code for some other reason, and I found out that, I believe it's only in city code that nonprofits do not pay any business license fees here, and that includes Renown and Remsa and St. Mary's Hospital. And I just think we ought to take a look at that, see if it's actually state law that doesn't allow that, or it's a city, to say that maybe there's some parameters of we might be charging some business fees to some of these large, large corporations that are not people.
Councilman Iasi, you would look at some kind of structure base, based on?
Well, first, we'd have to know, is it just city ordinance? There might be a state law that precludes us from doing it, and then it would become moot, but that's the first thing, and then we could bring it all back and have an analysis done. So, just to do some investigation, see whether that's just in our ordinance or state or federal law.
Is that a motion to-
Yes, please.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L eight. Ms. Frazza.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I put this on the agenda, because there was some concern that, and I don't know if the RTC has even voted on acceptance of this, but there's concern by those who I represent that basically the city would receive this money and spend it on other purposes, which I know can legally do so, but I think that defeats the intent and purpose of protecting the neighborhood and the mitigation that's going to be required because of the road. So, I don't know what that amount is, but I certainly would like something to come back. And we did get the memo, thank you, from the city manager on the bond, so I think that's legally required on the bonding part, but I do believe-
You mean that confidential memo?
I don't think it's confidential. Is it confidential?
No.
It says at the bottom of the memo. Says at the top of the memo.
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, the memorandum from bond council would be confidential.
Oh.
But not staff's- but not staff's memo, government memo.
I was going to just make a motion to waive confidentiality on this memo, which we could do also. So, you can discuss it if you want to.
You're not going to pick on me? Little guy against the city of Reno? No, so, yeah, I- and so, I believe that I would like to set aside some of the funds to make sure that the golf course is reconstructed, the nine holes, Mr. Mayor. I mean, if the road in this process moves forward, the concern by the residents over there is that the money would not be used to build the nine holes, and so, that's the purpose of why I put this resolution on the agenda. So, I think the bonds are taken care of, but we can discuss that as well on the bond issue under the warehouse.
And just in-
Mr. Guston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To your query about, has it been discussed? It's been a hot potato two or three times. It has not been resolved yet at the RTC. That's part of the- there's been some negotiations with two other, the alternate, the mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Iasi, myself. We- when it wasn't- our RTC meeting on Friday was canceled due to the fire. It wasn't on that agenda either. I'm not sure when it's going to come forward. My suggestion would be, I would strongly recommend that we hold this until we find out exactly. We've got all the money committed that people have said they were going to commit. It's not done yet. I wish I could say it is, but it's not. I think it's 95 percent, so that would be my hesitation to vote on it right now, because I don't know how anybody else would turn this, but I want to find out that we've got the committed amount of money that was talked about before, that said would be committed, but for some reason, since September, it hasn't been finalized. It goes back and forth whether people want to do it or not, and what we intend to use of the money, and so, I understand where you're coming from, Councilwoman, but I certainly would want to delay this until we have that commitment from the RTC.
Well, I think, Councilman Guston, I would be willing, I can bring it back, but also under the resolution, we could put language in there that is contingent that we get that funding from the RTC, because this resolution would essentially be void if we didn't get the money from RTC.
Yes, let me ask, what, the money to defees the bonds, or what dollar amount are you talking about? That's- I'm sorry, I asked you a question to interrupt you. Excuse me, I apologize for that. But there have been about three different figures floated, from six million to thirteen million to nine and a half to seven and a half million. I don't really know what it is, and I sit on that board.
Well, the council, well, the majority of the council went for it, I believe, with, what, seven and a half million? Seven point three million. So, I mean, that was the vote by this council. But I'll bring it back so we can get clarification on the actual action by the council and how much funding we're talking about. It'd probably be beneficial to have the estimates as well on the nine holes of the course, and I would go ahead and make a motion to continue this till the February eighth, so we can get all that information.
Mr. Ashup, you had something?
Yeah, on the face of it, unless something changes, I'm not going to support this, and the reason why is, even if we got the money, we have no idea when they're actually going to build the road. They might not build the road for three years, which means with this resolution, I'd have to use that money right now to pay off the bond, and I'd have to hold this money in abeyance, and that might not be the best move for the city. It depends on when, if they're going to build the road, you know, starting June, yes, but there's no indication. They haven't got the Army Corps permits yet on the actual- but we're supposed to get the money within a few ninety days, I think, of the RTC taking action. So, I would leave it to the city manager to come back with, here's what I want to do with the money in the interim of when, I mean, we all said we wanted to rebuild the golf course and do that, but that carrying cost of possibly two or three years could be huge.
And I don't disagree.
Except if the money spent, then there is no money to build a golf course. I mean, so it defeats the purpose of-
It all comes to us.
-of getting compensated from the RTC. So, everything that was told to those residents in the resolution that-
No, that- no, that hasn't happened yet. We said that we would do that. Don't go there yet. We haven't voted to put the money anywhere else yet.
No, we hadn't.
I'm just saying, if we got the money tomorrow, and they're not going to build the road for three years, or maybe they never build the road.
That's my point, never build the road. We still get the money.
Or they never build the road, what are you going to do? Then that money has to stay there forever. We only have to pay off the bond when you alter the golf course, and that may be a long time from now. But you can make a motion to continue.
Well, let's talk about that, because we could defees the bonds, as soon as we get the money, we could defees the bonds and start saving those payments, without making any decision as to what we're going to do with the balance.
That's right.
But for me, I would leave that to the manager. I might have another bond that's charging me more interest rate. Why would I pay off this bond if there's another bond out there for the same amount of money that I would pay off the general fund?
Okay, well taken. You're right. Right.
Ms. Frazza, did you have a motion, or do you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, no, I'd like to continue this.
Okay, she has a motion for continuing?
Until the February eighth meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second to continue, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, the opposed, no. What is it?
Looks like it's continued.
Continued.
I just brought up the issues that we're talking about there.
Eight one is continued also?
Yes.
Okay. Item E one. Let's go, Good Deeds.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Chris Good from the City Manager's office. Just a few items to bring to your attention briefly this afternoon about good news in the community. Beginning- can you advance that one? Thank you. Beginning at midnight tonight is the annual point-in-time homeless count. This is done every year. It's a cross-agency collaboration involving a lot of volunteers and staff from various agencies out in the field. The results that are collected from this annual count of the homeless population go toward obtaining federal funding for services throughout the community. We have at least twenty different agencies involved in this thing, and the reason that I'm calling this good news is that we really rely on volunteers to a large part, and we get them each year. They come out to help us with this count, and as I say, it helps us obtain some federal funds to provide services to homeless and near homeless in the community. Can you go to the next slide, please? Good news, last Friday's Reno Big Horns game, they were opposing the Rio Grande Valley Vipers. Fans helped out the needy at this game by purchasing the tickets. Five dollars from each ticket purchased went to help the needy in our community through the Catholic charities of Northern Nevada. So, there's a local organization providing funding from their local fan support back to local charities for help for services again in Northern Nevada. And finally, the Nightingale Family Foundation funded a whole year's worth of free second Saturdays at the Nevada Museum of Art. This is the second time this has happened, so it's the second straight year of free Saturdays for families, for anybody, to visit the Nevada Museum of Art, get a taste of what's there, and if you like it a lot, you might decide to become a member, which would not be a bad idea. It's a continuation of last year's program, but the museum has combined this with hands-on, family-friendly programming, so things like storytelling, art projects, get the kids involved in creating art themselves when they're there at these free Saturday visits. So, it's good all the way around for a little art education and art participation as well, made possible by the Nightingale Family Foundation. And that's all I have for you this afternoon? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I do have one more. I apologize. The Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful Christmas Tree Recycling Program has been completed for this year. They collected over ten thousand Christmas trees, diverted that many trees from the landfill for use in parks projects around the Truckee Meadows. It's turned into mulch. They had over three hundred residents volunteered, and they set up locations at Bartley Ranch, at Rancho San Rafael, and Shadow Mountain Sports Complex in Sparks. Nevada Energy provided ten thousand dollars in matched funding, and Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful raised that ten thousand dollars, so it was matched by Nevada Energy. So, thank you all the way around there. Yet another very successful year of Christmas tree recycling. And that's the end of my good news report for this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Item E2. Update discussion, potential direction to staff. Is Ms. Lurf here?
Mr. Mayor, she's on the radio.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, on the record, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, I've just been informed that Chief Andy Flock from the City of Sparks collapsed at the Regional Training Center. He's on his way to St. Mary's Hospital. We don't know what has occurred. I will tell you that since I've arrived in the city, Andy has been a close colleague and friend, and we wish him his best in his speedy recovery and his family, so.
All right, wait here and we'll get a little update from Ms. Lurf on this fire deal. She said she'd be right here. Let's give her just a few seconds.
Yeah, I didn't have anything new, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if there was anything new from anyone else on the fire.
I would like to just get a minute here, 'cause she had something she was gonna tell us.
We were scheduled to have a joint fire advisory board meeting on Monday of this week, but there wasn't a quorum, so we had to cancel that.
That was my fault this time. I know publicly I've been blasting those guys, so I'll take my lumps.
Take it. What happened?
One or two.
Two.
Can we, while we're waiting for students to come down, can we go back to L1? You indicated, Mr. Mayor, you wanted me to...
Yes, sir. Go back to item L1, please.
Yeah, to have staff, the City Attorney's Office, look at that resolution, and then maybe give us an attorney-client memo.
Anything else there? Ms. Lurf, would come forward, please, here a minute. Would you give us an update on this fire deal inter-local agreement and stuff like this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Souchler, for the record. I'll defer to the chief.
Ms. Lurf, Ms. Lurf, would you come back to the podium, please? I think, is today your last day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We wanna thank you very much for your service to our city. Ms. Lurf is retiring tomorrow. You've been a great asset to our community and our city, and we really appreciate it. I love pulling one on you. Didn't work.
I told staff, nobody listened to me for nine years, so why would you start now?
Well, I wasn't gonna start now. But anyway, on behalf of everybody here, you've done an excellent job, outstanding job, and we wish you the best in whatever you're doing going forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. We will be calling you back on an appointment we've already got.
To Mr. Mayor, to Sue, I wanna say, you've been here for that time, and it's been a pretty tumultuous time here in the city, and you've been through all this stuff, tough good times and bad times, and you were part of the glue that held it together in the bad times, and I really appreciate it. I leaned on you a lot during some times, and you always came through, and I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Dave, that means a lot. I appreciate that greatly.
Any other comments? Ms. Haji?
Ditto. I mean, Sue's always been very responsive. She's the, you know, Model A or prototype of what a staff person and management should be, and, like I said, very responsive.
Ms. Ed.
Absolutely. I mean, Sue has more institutional knowledge than I think we even want to think about today. With her departure, there's just going to be such a huge void, and I think probably, for me, the one of many attributes that she has, the one that has served the very best for our city, is her keen, kind, and intuitive people skills.
Thank you, Sharon.
Well, I can tell you weren't in a closed room where they're telling you things.
And I'd like to... Sue, thank you very much. I know we butted heads a couple of times, but I think for you getting me to cross Ts and dot Is and bringing the thing forward on Foster Drive, you've been a great steward of that facility over there that we had some bumps and bruises in the beginning, but you did a great job in helping us secure it. Now we have to go forward, but thanks for what you did to help me on that. I really do greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, everyone said it. I mean, I agree with everyone, and, you know, even in reference to Dan's, I mean, I think that's just that can-do attitude. Once you got direction, you got out and went out and got it done, and continually went out and got it done, and I certainly appreciate that.
Thank you. I'd give you some comments, but I can't, so, thank you.
I meant to do this when we had a crowd. Chief Hernandez, don't forget our phone number in case we need some more advice. All right. Any public comment?
No.
Chair entered a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. And now we go, Mr. Scott, do you join us up here? Did you notice the way I'm paying nice attention to him, and I called him Mr. Scott? Redevelopment, joint meeting of the Reno City Council and the Redevelopment Agency. Roll call, please.
Hashtev, Guston, Zadra, Sfarazza, Dorch, Iasi, Chav, I mean, Kachal, and Scott.
Any public comment, Card? Okay. Approval of the agenda?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes, December 7, December 14?
Moved to approve.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B1 was requested to be pulled, is that correct? Okay. So item B1 is pulled. Item B2?
Good afternoon, Pete Wallace, City Manager's Office. This item in front of you is a proposed lease from the University of Nevada Reno. At the December meeting, staff was directed to work with the university to try to find exhibit space. We identified two possible spots, one being the city center site, and then also the West Street Market Space D1. It is preferred by the university to locate within the West Street Market Space, and within the staff report is the proposed terms on behalf of the university. Staffs available for questions.
Ms. Haji?
Yeah, I think this is a great thing, Mr. Mayor. We've been asking the university to come down and do more stuff in downtown areas, so that helps us. It helps fill up the West Street Market and get that demographic down there that we want. So I will move to approve.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B2-1, resolution?
Resolution number 207. Resolution of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Reno, authorizing the chairman of the agency to execute a lease agreement by and between the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Reno and the University of Nevada, and authorizing the chairman, executive director, and members, officers, and agents of the agency to take all actions necessary to implement the agreements approved herein in this resolution.
Moved to adopt.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B3. Appointment to the Redevelopment Agency Board. We have any appointments?
No, it should be continued.
All right. We've been requested by staff to pull items C1, C1-1, C2, and C2-1 until the December 8...
No.
Excuse me, February 22nd meeting. Yes?
Yeah, I don't mind pulling, but I had one question that I wanna get answered, Dan, is, is it normal to have the parks include the sidewalks? Is that, usually that's left out, so it's not the whole APN on there? That would be my only question.
Okay, that's what they'd be bringing back to us and stuff. Okay. Chair entertained a motion to continue this until the 22nd of February. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, no. Future agenda items? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanna bring on the news racks. I've been looking at them downtown, and we provide news racks that we don't maintain very well, but still there are groups putting their news racks next to them. I took a couple of pictures. But I don't know whether we can require them to be in our news racks, but if we can't require them to be in our news racks, maybe we should take ours out and save us on maintenance costs. But one way or the other, it should be resolved. If you look around, they're becoming just targets for graffiti, but then right next door to it, you've got a bunch of, like, that's, this is at First and Sierra, there's our news rack there at the end, and then Gazette Journal has one here. This is on Second Street. We have news racks. You see they're empty, and theirs is right next door. See, there's four of those that are empty, and the Gazette Journal and USA Today are right next door to it. And the next one is, that's the back of that one. I think I have a zoom in of that, where people just use it now for graffiti stuff. This is at the post office, obviously. We have our news racks here, but all the other ones are down at the entrance. So I just wanna look at that and see whether...
What is our ordinance, say? Why don't they use what we put up?
I think it was like in 1988, they came to some agreement that we would provide them. I don't know whether they're not using them anymore, but one thing should happen, we either should talk them into moving back into ours, or we should just take ours out and not have to maintain them.
Absolutely.
Because we're not doing, right now, those ones are almost all broken, and just sort of clean it up.
Dave, you might remember about four or five years ago, I brought this forward, and that's when we came up with the very rack that we're using. And we held quite a few community meetings that included representatives from the media. And I thought that we got agreement at that time, so staff can go back and take a look at that, that they would indeed utilize the units that we provided.
And maybe they're gonna say that we just aren't maintaining them enough, or, I don't know, just wanna look into it.
Theirs look worse than ours.
Are we required, do they pay any space rent or anything?
I think it's when they first came up with the redevelopment downtown and did the pavers, was to try to keep a continuous look and look and feel that we would do that for them and put those in there, and everybody agreed with that. I still think we ought to, if they wanna move into them, it would still look better in the city if we did that. But if they're not gonna use them, then we might as well pull ours out.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
All right, so that'll be on our next agenda item. All right, public comment. Dave Deluch? How do you pronounce your last name? Sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Dane DeLuque?
Oh, DeLuque, I'm very sorry, sir.
This is on behalf of item L5 earlier today. This is over 1,000 signatures that we've collected outside of City Hall to end corporate personhood and get their money out of politics. And I just wanted to know if you guys vote, you voted against item L5, and a lot of you said you didn't have enough information about it to make a clear decision, so I was wondering why it's not tabled until the next city council meeting. I have sort of a speech that I prepared. It's become increasingly apparent that all of what America fought for, the liberties, the rights, and dignities, are being perverted and assassinated behind the backs of a duped and pacified general public that has fallen asleep at the wheel of democracy. And while in our corporately-induced slumber, some of mankind was working very hard to create a new sort of democracy that better worked for them, and this was man's ugly, fictitious brother, the corporation, but still a part of mankind nonetheless, as we've learned from the Supreme Court's decision ruling two years ago. While man's ugly brother succeeded in carving while defacing our democracy is, in fact, as I see, an oligarchy. And now some man is waking up, it seems, and he may be inclined to ask the people who have been in charge in this said, if the American Revolution, the Civil War, and the Civil Rights Movement all accord to ward off disgraces to freedom, not unlike the concept of corporations being people and their money being equal to freedoms of speech, and to help preserve the idea of a country by the people, for the people, then when such noble movements and wars achieve temporary results for their causes that are later poisoned by greed and manipulated and allowed to decay into a picture-perfect display of what so many brave men and women fought and died and fought against, is it not safe to say that the ones who allowed this decay to happen are guilty of all that was lost in those fights of freedom that are now seemingly in vain? Man might ask, how many people in the Civil War fought for corporate rights? And he might learn that none of them did. They fought for the rights of man long before he went into a slumber. He may ask, how many of them fought and died for corporate rights? And he may be regrettably informed, all of them did. And as a man now waking up to what I myself have squandered in my apathy, I am now asking you, the City Council of Reno, Nevada, to do your duty as Americans to uphold and to protect what so many have given so much for, and to at least recognize in your hearts it was not for this.
Thank you very much. Alan Burton?
I would also like to speak on item L5.
Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Alan Burton, for the record, and I am a person, corporations are not. I think this is apparent. I would like to thank all of you, city council meetings, or members, for your services as representatives of your community and as representatives of the people's voice. As you know, we have been out here talking to the people of Reno in front of City Hall, speaking to them about corporate personhood, about the Citizens United ruling in the Supreme Court, and the consensus that I have seen is that people feel that most of our politicians are bought and sold, because we can look at the campaign contributions, we can look at the ramifications of the Citizens United ruling that has allowed for these super PACs to pump undetermined amounts of money undisclosed into political campaigns in order to buy elections. We have, like Dane has said, over 1,000 letters signed by individuals stating that they do not believe that corporate personhood is a legitimate ruling by the Supreme Court. And in the process of gathering signatures, we talked to a few thousand people, and one thing that kept coming up is people think that it might be too late, that they don't register to vote because they think our government is already bought and sold. They see that political campaigns are funded by corporations. The people have seen corporations being bailed out time and time again. As the people are foreclosed upon, corporations are bailed out with taxpayer dollars. Pandering politicians in the Clinton administration repealed the Glass-Steagall Banking Act of 1933, an act passed to prevent another depression. Then there's the outrageous Supreme Court ruling in the case of Citizens United versus the FEC, where the Supreme Court makes a mockery of our Constitution by ruling that money somehow equals free speech. This ruling has then allowed for these so-called super PACs and a billion-dollar presidential campaign by our current president, all funded by corporations. The people know that both Democrat and Republican campaigns are funded by the same corporations, multinational corporations that have no national allegiance, corporations owned in part by anti-American parties. These profit-driven corporate persons should not be able to buy elections based on constitutionally protected free speech. People across the nation are standing against these perversion of our democratic republic. In LA, New York, and I believe up to 20 other areas, their city councils have passed this same agenda. I heard that a lot of you need more information on the legal ramifications of passing this. I believe that they were provided with the Los Angeles documents. I hope that next time you will vote in favor of the people. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Burton, I hope next time you guys are here when we talk about the agenda item.
Two minutes.
That's something, could've used you an hour ago.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Staff has asked if you could reopen B2 for clarification on whether the motion included the RAB or not.
So I need to make a motion to reconsider B2?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Again, Pete Wallace, the City Manager's Office. I apologize to ask to have this item reopened. At the RAB meeting yesterday, they made the recommendation to the board to include within the lease a buyout clause that would allow the agency to cancel on a 60-day notice, but it would also require the agency to reimburse the university up to $10,000 for the tenant improvement costs associated with the project.
Why would we wanna do that?
It's gonna, why would they, yeah?
I believe that the intent behind the recommendation was, when we approached, when staff approached UNR, we offered a license, which is a one-year agreement to kind of do a test period for both sides. The university requested a three-year lease. That ties us into a term that won't allow us to market the space, and I believe that they looked at the lost revenue. If we were to identify a tenant that can go into the space, say, in year two, it would give that agency the option to cancel the lease, and then reimburse the university for the HVAC and other improvements to the site.
Is that acceptable to the university, that new provision?
It would be in their benefit, and we'd have to come back if it was not, so.
But have you floated the idea with them yet?
No, but the meeting was last night, it concluded at 5:00, and we've been unable to speak to the university yet.
So if you found the super tenant, then our exposure would be up to $10,000 bucks to reimburse the university?
And that would be in year one, it would be prorated over the three years.
Right.
How much are they planning to spend over there?
The original estimates are approximately $10,000, including HVAC.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It was a guesstimation, one of the members of the RAB, I think it's kind of a contractor, Michael Steedman, and we thought, or one of the members, John, or David Farai, he thought it would be around $5,000. Just to be sure, we put the limit at 10. I don't think it's gonna be 10,000, and then we prorated over three, they have a three-year lease, so if they, and in the first year, they would, we, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, we said the first year, we wouldn't, they would be there secured for one year.
Correct, it would start after year one.
So at the second year, if somebody came along, wanted to pay us, you know, we're charging, what, a buck a year?
A dollar a year, and they are paying CAM.
So if somebody came along, just to protect ourselves, and the market picked up, and we could make more money, then if they left after one year, we'd owe them two-thirds of what they spent on improvements, which should probably be around $5,000 or $6,000. And David Farai made the comment that this is a very common thing with leases, because he and his dad obviously have a lot of leases in town, so it made sense to us, that's why we went, made the recommendation.
Yes.
Since we voted on this, could you take, run it through the university, and if they're agreeable to it, bring back an amendment? Because I wouldn't want to do this, and then them be opposed, and then the whole thing has to start over again. Because if they're gonna be agreeable, they've got to sign it anyway, but if they don't agree, then we have an agreement. Because it's been vacant for how long?
Approximately a year and a half, since the last tenant occupied the space.
I agree if it came forward and they saw it, but now we're gonna spend another month, and they'll say, we don't want to agree to that. If they agree to it, we could do that.
Well, either way, it's gonna come back to us, because if we went ahead and proved it today, and they didn't like it, then staff would have to come back to us and provide the counterproposal, so, either way, Dave, I think it's just more of a good faith effort, let's just run a buy them, and if they say okay, then we'll bring it back and approve it with the new language. That's your suggestion, right?
We just change it, but right now, they sort of have veto power over that amendment right now, we have already approved it, if they approve it, they could sign it now, if they like this to where they get paid back. It just seems like we want to get some of this stuff done by April, and this is gonna postpone it all for some more time.
Now, this is on West Street, or is this on?
This is on West Street.
That's not the one you were talking about?
But why wouldn't we just tell, adopt, send the lease forward with that change, so if the university likes it, they can get started right away? They don't like it, it's got to come back to us with whatever that proposal is, but assuming they do like it, which I would assume they would, then-
Well, we could approve an amendment to the lease right now, well, we'd have to have the amendment, though, I think, right? So we'd have to just change it in the lease, you're right.
Yeah, what I understand, what the RAB is suggesting is just to add another provision in the lease, that if we decide to terminate it in year two or three, they would just get a prorate reimbursement of their tenant improvements.
That's correct.
So, is that all right with you, Dave?
That's a good motion.
Let's just, yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt that amendment, send it to the university, and obviously, if they agree, then staff can get started with them right away.
Okay, have a second. Second, have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
This is the motion that I have a hard time getting a motion on. Do I have a second? Wait, I'm sorry, I've got a gentleman that said no. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously.